Mayor, it's now 6:30 and you have all of your colleagues here whenever you're ready.
Okay, we will adjourn the special meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, February 8th, and we'll convene the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, February 8th. Steve, we didn't have anything to report out, Mr. City Attorney, did we?
We do not. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So if the clerk will call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Kozlowski.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Aquino.
Here.
Chalamchela.
Here.
And Howell.
Here. If you will join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic one nation, for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Convenient that I have a flag in my dining room. So we will move on to agenda updates. Do we have any?
You do have a few agenda updates this evening. Item number seven is being moved to your February 22nd agenda.
Okay.
You have an amendment to item number nine, and you have additional information on item numbers eight, 10, and 12.
Okay. Do you have, I'd actually like to pull item number eight. Do you have anybody else that would like to pull anything?
Do you want to take business from the floor and scheduled presentation?
Oh, sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. I was jumping ahead when we started talking about the consent calendar. Yes, business from the floor is in order.
You currently have no request to speak under business from the floor, and I do not see any hands raised. We'll give a minute. Oh, there's one.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to guess that this is Mike Reynolds from Hefra. We're going to go ahead and allow you to talk. I'll start your clock at three minutes.
Okay, so item number one, consent calendar line item 100795.
Mike, I'm going to stop you right there. If you have something that you'd like us to pull from consent, we're happy to do that, but this is business from the floor, meaning that these are, they have time to discuss things that are not actually on the agenda.
I guess I was going to ask is it hasn't been removed? Where do you bring up that piece of having consent removed?
If you are happy to make a request for one of us to pull item 10, if you'd like to comment on it.
Yeah, that's my request because there was an offline solution that was worked this morning. So I think at this point, the reasoning behind it has now been satisfied, and so that would be the request to pull that item from the calendar.
Which item number is that?
10795.
Okay, that would be item number eight. I apologize.
And I've already requested that that be pulled, Mike.
Okay, good. Okay, and then second line item is still looking for some help in getting a clear definition of recusal for specifically HDC, but it probably applies in some ways to the commission too. City Attorney Wong has been helpful in identifying the FPPC, and I'm assuming the conflict resolution or conflict of interest subsection. And if that is in fact the process of record, can we define that? Because in reading through that, it would align with his previous statements at the January 17th meeting of a proximity recusal is not an option per those rules, right? So a zero distance, there is no element that allows that anymore. Just looking for some clarity because we still have so much ambiguity, and it is continuing to cause this issue of of recusals to me that are being far stretched beyond whatever was the intent of any state or city municipal recusal rules. And I don't see it documented anywhere where it's being supported by the actual text that's being referenced. So anyway, looking for some help with that, and I can, you know, wait for the response offline or whatever.
Yeah, because we can't actually respond to you right now anyway because it's not in the.
I think Carrie froze.
Carrie may have far wiser than just PC.
Mayor Howell, your Wi-Fi, you're cutting in and out. I don't know if you could move to another part of your location.
Okay, with that, we will move on to scheduled presentations, unless we have some more business from the floor.
You have no other request to speak under business from the floor.
Mayor Howell, if you can hear us, you are frozen on our screens. You may need to exit the Zoom and come back in or try an area where you are that might have stronger Wi-Fi. I'm going to call Mayor Howell, so hold on one moment.
Rosario, I was looking like to get to pinch hit right away.
Sorry about that, guys. I got knocked off the internet. I'm back. Okay, I'm back, guys.
Okay.
Internet, Al Gore kicked me off the internet.
Okay, all right, for me to start?
Go ahead, Stacy.
Could I be enabled to share my screen, please?
There you go. You should be able to. There we go. We see it. Stacy.
Okay, great.
You're good. Okay, go ahead.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Stacy Tumani, Chief Financial Officer. Tonight's presentation will include the results of the audited annual comprehensive financial report. That's now known as the ACFOR for short, and that's for fiscal year 2021. During this year's audit, the city received an unmodified opinion with no findings, and that's good news. That's the audit result that we want. Tonight, I'll also be presenting our projections for how we think the general fund will end this fiscal year, and that's based on the results of the first two quarters, July 1st through December 31st. This first slide here is presenting the results of our last two audits, fiscal year 1920, 2021, and 2122. And the 1920-21 change in fund balance is where we're going to focus here. So in fiscal year 1920, we used $5 million of the general funds, unassigned fund balance, or the rainy day fund, and that brought us down to about 13.8 million or 14.4% as a percentage of expenditures. In fiscal year 21, we drastically reduced our expenditures because of all of the unknown related to COVID as we entered that fiscal year. With those reduced expenditures, recovery of sales tax by the end of the fiscal year, and then the $1 million of the CARES Act reimbursement, we were able to replenish our rainy day fund back to about 19 million, right down here, and that was 21.4% as a percentage of expenditures. So this year, it wasn't a revenue windfall, but rather that very deliberate reduction in spending that was combined with the use of one-time funding sources to help get us through that fiscal year and to replenish our fund balance. On the far right, we're projecting total revenues at the end of the year to be at 98 million and total expenditures at 96.5 million. So that's revenues exceeding expenditures by about 1.5 million. The council has also approved the appropriation of about $2.2 million of ARPA funds, and then the 2.2 will also be expended. So those zero each other out. So our expected change in fund balance will be this about $1.5 million increase to our unassigned fund balance. What that is really made up of is the $900,000 of our contingency that we had hoped we would be able to add to fund balance. And then the additional $600,000 is mostly due to that increase in sales tax that was just higher than we had originally projected when we were budgeting for sales tax during COVID a year ago. That'll bring the unassigned fund balance to about $2.8 million, but as a percentage of expenditures, it'll be down a little bit at 21%. The next slide here shows the city's unassigned fund balance, just in this graph form. What we're seeing again is this decrease here in fiscal year 20 due to COVID, the recovery back in fiscal year 21, being able to add about $1.5 million for fiscal year 22, but again, seeing that reduction in fund balance as a percentage of fund balance represented by the line at the top. When we look at the city's major revenue sources, the final results for fiscal year 21 are again in the left column. Then we have the budget here in the middle, and our projections for fiscal year 21, 22 are over here to the right. At this point, we are projecting that property tax and sales tax will come in a little bit over budget by the end of the year. Property tax by about $500,000, and then sales tax by about $2 million. And again, that sales tax was just because of the quicker recovery than we had expected. The transient occupancy tax is projected to come right in at budget at $2 million. Charges for services, we've seen a recovery in as well. This includes our Parks and Recreation program revenues. And as you recall, we budgeted very cautiously in this category and also in the Parks and Recreation expenditure budget. And this was with the intention that we could allow for additional temporary staffing budget if revenues came in higher than expected. And so we've been able to move forward with that plan during this year, but you'll also see expenditures up as a result. The bigger part of this increase in charges for services is actually due to activity in community development in the engineering fees related to the plan area. And that extra revenue gets mostly offset by increases in contract expenses related to that activity. So you'll see that offsetting increase in expenditures on our expenditure slides. Continuing on to the major expenditure categories in the general fund, we have the same columns as earlier slides. The fiscal year 21 audited results to the left, the budget in the middle, and then our projections for fiscal year 21, 22 to the right. What we're expecting for salary benefits is for it to be over the budgeted amount by about $1.4 million. This is mostly due to overtime in the fire department necessary for staffing the shifts appropriately, but also because of overtime activity related to the wildfires. And that portion of the OT will be reimbursed by CalOES. It's estimated to be about $750,000 in reimbursements for the fire department, and that was factored into our revenue projection. Our O&amp;M is projected to come in at about 24 million at the end of the year, about $1.8 million over budget. And much of this is related to those community development contracts for the plan area that are then offset by those increased charges for services revenue that we just went over in the previous slide. Capital outlay is projected to be slightly over budget by the end of the year, and this is mostly related to the community center roof repair that was budgeted and approved in the prior year but is being expended in this year. So just brings that number up. With the expenditure of the ARPA funds, our total expenditures will be about 98.7 million by the end of the year. When we look at expenditures sorted by department, we see that most departments are coming in under budget. We do have the fire department, which we just talked about, mostly up due to overtime costs and some vehicle maintenance expenses. We have community development over, again, due to those increased contract costs that are mostly offset by the increased revenue. And then we have Parks and Recreation up slightly, and those were due to those increased temporary staffing budgets that we were able to increase. And also, the community center roof is part of that number as well. So those are the results for the general fund. We'll move on to our three enterprise funds, starting with the water fund. The water fund's projected to end the fiscal year with program revenues right at budget, about 17.9 million. And operating expenses in total are projected to be at about 15.4 million, so right in line with the budget. Capital expenses are projected to be about 4.8 million, and that will leave the water fund with about 21.3 million in working capital reserves. So it leaves them in good shape to prepare for future capital projects. Our wastewater enterprise fund is projected to have program revenues slightly higher than budget at about 8.6 million. Operating expenses in total are projected to be below budget at 5.5 million. And capital expenditures are projected to commit at about $3.5 million this year. And working capital remains about the same as it was last year at over 16 million. The solid waste enterprise fund has program revenues projected at about 17.7 million. This is higher than in the past, and this is due to the rate increases now coming into effect. Total operating expenses will be at about 15.6 million, just slightly over budget. When we add in our capital expenses for vehicle purchases of about $4 million, we are looking at a ending working capital of about 4.5 million in this fund, so still below that minimum reserves level. But we anticipate that the new increased rates as we move forward will be helping with that situation there. And last, we just have an update on our internal service fund, the risk management fund. This is the fund that we use to account for the cost of the city's insurance programs. This year, we had another planned decrease in revenue in this fund, and that was to help offset expenses in the general fund as we managed our way through COVID. It allowed us to keep insurance expenses in the general fund departments stable. And then as we built the budgets for fiscal year 21 and 22, we did the same thing. So we've used this for three budget cycles now. And their planned uses of the unrestricted net position, but it's gone down from about $10 million to a projected ending net position of about 4.8 million. So this fund is working as it's intended. It's minimizing the impacts to the general fund, but we'll need to begin to replenish this so that it can continue to be a stabilizer of insurance costs for the general fund for future budget years. Some of the biggest increases for this fund this year were in our active employee health. 7.6 million last year, up to 8.2 for this year. Retiree health was pretty stable. The workers' comp insurance went up from 1.7 to 2.4, and then liability insurance remained pretty stable compared to last year. And that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
You're muted, Mayor.
I'm muted myself. Can we get back a couple of slides on that, Stacy?
Sure.
I think it might have been the water one. I can't, so. Okay, capital expenses. We're showing 16.3 million in the budget and predict, so what are we not doing? Or what did we not do?
All right. Good evening, Mayor Howell, members of the council, Marcus Yasutaki, environmental and water resources director. It's not so much about what we're not doing or what we're not going to do. It's really going to be the timing of projects. So likely, based on schedules, these, there's a handful of projects that are going to be constructed in next fiscal year, just due to the timing of when we finish some of the environmental requirements that we need to do as well as getting the projects bid. So what we're likely to see is just some of that expenditure being shifted from the current fiscal year into next fiscal year.
Okay, so which projects are being shifted?
So there's a water system rehab, number two project that's likely to be shifted. We've got a non-potable well at the Cross Street from the golf course. We have an inner tie with San Juan Water District that we're currently finishing up some environmental work with the Bureau of Reclamation. There's a Willow Hill valve replacement project at Willow Hill Reservoir. That's likely to be shifted once we get the final design and everything approved from the Department of Safety, the Division of Safety of Dams. I could probably track down maybe one or two others that I just can't think of off the top of my head.
The mayor may be rejoining. It looks like she may have lost Wi-Fi.
I'm back.
Oh, there she is.
I don't know why it's doing this. Sorry about that, guys. Can we move forward one slide? And same question to Marcus on the wastewater. What products are getting moved?
Yep, we have a Folsom Boulevard sewer line project. We have a basin for sewer project that's kind of in and around the historic district, replacing approximately 2,200 feet of sewer pipe. There's a pump station number three, which is right next to the cliff house. That's probably going to be in next fiscal year as well because we're trying to wrap up some agreements with the cliff house.
Okay.
I think that's it on that one that I can recall.
Okay, I'm good.
All right, thanks.
Stacy, this is YK. Maybe for everyone's benefit, do you mind to move back to the expenditure where we have? Is it four or five? Yeah.
This one?
Not this one, but.
This one?
Yes. Yeah, if either you or Elaine can give us, you know, for everyone's benefit, the actual expenditure in 2021 is 89 millions, and 2022 is almost 98 millions. It's almost nine millions more than what it was during the, you know, the pandemic time. Maybe if you can shed some light on the general expenditure, it's almost nine millions up 10% now.
Sure. Part of that is the use of the ARPA funds down there, the 2.2 million. So it'd be better to compare the 89, the 90 million to the 96.5. And where you're seeing that is salary and benefits mostly. Some of those were planned increases based on the agreements that we have with our labor groups. So those were cost of living adjustments and step increases. And then also the cost of benefits that just goes up year after year. So we see that increase every year. And then we also had the additional overtime in this budget as well. Now, you also remember that for fiscal year 2021, we got rid of all the temporary employees. We had positions frozen for the entire year because we were really cutting back, which is why we were allowed to add or able to add $5 million back to fund balance in fiscal year 2021. We didn't have to be as restricted this year, so we were able to unfreeze some of the positions throughout the year and bring back some of the temporary employees based on how revenues were looking. And so when you're comparing revenues to expenditures, revenues have exceeded expenditures as we went through. And so that was, that was part of what we had planned to do throughout the year is if revenues specifically for Parks and Rec or even community development were over, then it was going to increase expenditures, and that's what you're seeing.
Thank you. I'm clear on that.
Any other questions? If not, thank you, Stacy, and we will move on to the next item.
Your next item this evening is the consent calendar, and just as a reminder, you have item nine has been amended, and I believe there was a request to pull item eight.
That was, pulling item eight was me.
Okay.
I'll move the consent agenda minus item number eight.
And minus item number seven as well, please. That's been moved to February 22nd.
That's right.
And Madam Mayor, I thought Mr. Reynolds requested to pull item 10.
Except he was looking for item eight. He spoke incorrectly.
Understood. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, so.
Correct.
We have a motion in a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Kozlowski.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Chalamchela.
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes. So my comment on eight has to do with the parking on Sutter Street, and I don't know. My understanding is that there was some confusion between Mr. Galliardi and Mr. Rackman, where Mr. Galliardi's original request was that parking permits be issued to the eight loft residences that actually have a Sutter Street address, as well as one other individual who technically has a Sutter Street address, but all of these people's vehicular access to their homes is actually on the alley. So I don't believe that anybody was requesting that the residential parking permits extend to causing restrictions of actual parking capacity on Sutter Street. It was simply to give permits to those nine residences. So, and I had hoped that we were going to be able to do this administratively without having to take action on this. So I think this is, I don't, you know, I don't know how we resolved this because I think it was simply a misunderstanding.
I did reach out to Mr. Galliardi to confirm his intent. And yes, you are correct. He was intending to obtain permits for any of the residents that had the access off of the alleyway that have a Sutter Street address. This was the method that Mr. Galliardi and I agreed was appropriate. It just extends the boundaries, the half blocks from the Figaroa Sutter Alley down to Sutter Street, but not on Sutter Street. He concurred with that. I think you're correct. There was a misunderstanding about what the actual goal and method of getting to that goal.
No, 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 no. What was stated plainly in the email correspondence was that they wanted to be able to get permits for guests to be able to park up on the side streets, up the hill, in the, for those residents. And, you know, we were careful to set the boundaries of that district to try and deal with the street parking on the residential street, and residents that don't face on that street, I don't see why we would need to make a change right now. We are still talking about a pilot. I have full expectation that those boundaries will grow over time, but I don't think right now is the time to mess around with it.
I don't, I don't want to mess with the boundaries at all. I simply want to give parking permits to those nine residences. That's, that's all I'm asking. And to be honest with you, right now, the lower part of all of those side streets on Decatur, on Will, there are no, there are no residences in that lower part. So I don't know, I, this, to me, seems like it turned into a tempest in a teapot because for some reason, some, all I wanted to do is just get the ability to get permits.
They don't need permits, though. They don't park up on the, up on the street. That's the whole thing. They don't need personal permits. They should be parking where they always park, which shouldn't be in front of the houses on Figaroa. Right?
There is nowhere to park in front, there's, their only parking, Mike, right now is the alley.
Okay. Okay, so the parking in the alley is not restricted like we've made it on Figaroa for, you know, the 48 hours on the weekend.
There is, there is no guest parking in the alley for the lofts, and there is no guest parking in the, in the alley for the other resident that's on the next block of Sutter Street.
Okay. Listen, this is not a hill for me to die on. I just, I think we're probably, we're about halfway through the test as it is, the pilot. And I just would prefer to not start messing around with the boundaries at all.
I don't want to mess with the boundaries. I just, Mike, I'm not, I don't want to mess with the boundaries. I don't think anybody intended that. I simply want to get parking permits to those nine residences. That's it.
But Madam Mayor, doesn't that raise another question where are, you know, if we make this permanent, are we going to issue permits to residents who live on streets where there is no permit parking restriction? Because if we do that, won't, won't there be other neighbors on other streets who say, well, sometimes my guest parks on Figaroa or my guest parks wherever? I mean, it seems like at some point you just have to have, there's going to have to be a boundary somewhere.
Right, and I guess that's the reason for doing, for doing the. Right. And I guess that's the reason for doing, for doing the pilot. But I think right now we've put an unreasonable burden on nine residences. That's, that's all I'm saying.
I think because historically, anyone who was their guest would have parked in the area that's now restricted.
Right. But couldn't you say that about people on other streets also? That they are not included in the pilot? And yet some of parking, you know, on the next block over or around the corner or whatever is also not available to their guests now. I mean, and I guess to me, like Mike said, this is a pilot. We knew going in that permit parking would solve some problems and it would create some new problems. So the pilot's really doing exactly what it's supposed to. It's bringing some of these problems to light. And maybe we decide if we do make it permanent that the boundaries are extended and then also, you know, maybe some additional permits are issued. But it seems like that's a bigger question. Are you, are you going to issue permits to residents who live on streets where there, there is no permitted parking? Why, I mean, I don't know. I'm inclined to just let the thing finish out and then let whatever groups, you know, that started working on it, finish it out.
Everybody's entitled to their opinion. I, my inclination right now would be to give permits to those nine residents.
Madam Mayor, you do have to request to speak on this item.
Okay.
When you're ready.
Any other council members have a comment on this? Okay, let's hear from the public.
Okay, so your first speaker will be Joe Galliardi. And Joe, you'll have three minutes. You need to unmute yourself. And Joe will be followed by Mike Reynolds.
First of all, let me just clarify. At the request of my fellow neighbors here, if you, from the alley down to Sutter Street on Decatur, it's three hour parking. And from Decatur up on Fridays and Saturdays, it's restricted without a permit. There was a simple request that if we have guests, that they'd be able to park there. Some people suggested that they park in the parking garage. Well, if they're visiting you and have luggage or in my, our case grandchildren, they're hauling stuff across the plaza. It's not a deal breaker at all. It was just brought forward when I asked Mark about it. Mark said in order to accommodate getting guest permits, you'd have to extend the boundaries. So that's why I appeared at your last meeting and asked to extend the boundaries during this pilot program. It's not the end of the world by any means, so I'm not going to the mat on this. I'm just trying to share with you some input from my fellow neighbors here who say our guests don't have anywhere to park because it's either three hour parking on the parking that's adjacent to us or it's permit only. So where do our guests park? So it was just feedback to you that something that maybe was overlooked. It's not a deal breaker. I think you should take it as, oh, we didn't know that. It's not about asking for special favors. We're not asking for additional restricted parking. We're just asking for, we're not even asking for resident permit parking. We're asking for guests. So, I mean, that's, that's the crux of what I was asking for. My conversation with Mark got a little confusing is that there was thinking that we were asking not to have three hour parking in those zones. That's not the case. It's just guest permit parking for the residents that abut the boundary that you created.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Next will be Mike Reynolds. Go ahead, Mike. I'll reset the timer for you.
Yeah, I mean, I think Joe, Joe covered, you know, the, just, I just wanted to make sure there was clarity that that the request wasn't, you know, for resident permits, which I heard some of this dialogue. It was just to have the guests. I'll let the council decide, you know, there was some inputs from some stakeholders on the historic district parking work group that given the infrequency of those kinds of visits, it probably doesn't corrupt the data. And maybe the optics, you guys have to decide what you want to do. And so I'll leave that in your camp. But Joe did raise a point that the parking group will absorb, which is, as Mike, I think, or as Commissioner Kozlowski said, that as this expands out, we do need to ponder what will happen with residents on Sutter Street because that is in fact a new phenomenon as Jerry builds out his buildings. There will be more of those. And so, yeah, we should take those in and figure out what recommendations that we have. But I'll sort of leave it up to you if you guys want to decide whether it's a good thing to give some guest permits to those nine residents. But I don't think that corrupts the data. If you lean that direction, you just more have to deal with the optics of what it presents to potentially other people who may also come and ask. That's all.
Thank you, Mike. Madam Mayor, you have no further request to speak on this item.
Okay.
I have a quick question for Mark, if that's okay. Mr. Rackavan. What was the start date for our pilot and when do you anticipate being able to kind of call a timeout and do some evaluation?
So the official start date was Friday, December 17th. And the intention was that it would be a six month pilot. So that would put us into May before we would call it the six months and then collect our post pilot data.
All right. If, if the request is just for guest permits being issued to those nine residents, I guess, I guess I'm okay with it. Given that we're talking about them celebrating Easter, St. Patrick's Day, and I don't know what else in that timeframe.
I agree. This is YK. So, okay to give the guests two passes to whatever that number is.
I'm fine too. I'm a believer of continuous improvement. You look at a project, we'll be making tweaks along the way. This is one of those that we're encountering. So I'm fine giving guest passes to those nine residents.
Do you have anybody that wants to make a motion out of that?
Madam Mayor, if I may, in order to accommodate the council's change to the resolution being presented, I'm hearing that there is no change to the current district permit parking boundary. Yet we are going to add additional allowances to the pilot program. Is that what the council is inclined to do? No change to the boundary.
Right. That's why I asked if we had a motion.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a, I'll make a motion that the, the, the nine residents that have been identified that lit, that's that what, live on Sutter Street or have only access to their units via the alley between Sutter and Figaroa be granted the ability to request guest passes for parking. So it is, it's a semantical argument, Steve, as to whether or not we are expanding the boundary. We're not changing the boundary where the parking is controlled. We're just expanding the boundary of what residents are involved in the, in the, evolved in getting guest passes.
I am following. It's just the resolution as presented allows the council to modify the district boundary, the parking district boundary. So if the council does not want to change the boundary, then the resolution doesn't need to be adopted as presented. But you can give instruction to staff to modify the allowances in the current pilot program.
Okay, I think that I, that's what I'm hearing everyone wants to do. Nobody wants to change the boundary. We just want to give guest passes to those nine residences. Correct?
Yes.
I think that's perfectly good advice to the staff.
Okay.
We still need a vote on that, please.
Do we need a vote to reject resolution 10795? With Mike's commentary included that we will allow guest passes for those nine residences?
That will be just fine, Madam Mayor.
Is that your motion, Mike?
Yes, it is.
Yep.
We have a motion in a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rodriguez? Yes. Aquino?
I'm sympathetic, but I'm going to vote no. My preference is that we just complete the pilot as is and deal with all these tweaks, adjustments at the end. So, no.
Okay. And Howell?
Yes.
YK also yes.
Okay. Item.
Okay, Madam Mayor, that takes you to your next item, which is your public hearing for this evening. Public hearing item number 12, which is public hearing number four under the California Voting Rights Act regarding the composition of the city's voting districts pursuant to Elections Code Section 10010.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and the members of the City Council. My name is Stephen Wong, City Attorney. This is the fourth of the five public hearings required under California law to transition to a by district election. At this public hearing, the City Council will further review the focus maps identified by the City Council on January 11th, as well as the maps prepared by the city's demographer pursuant to council guidance at that meeting. More importantly perhaps, the council will also be asked to review and discuss election sequencing at tonight's meeting. I will now turn this over to the city's demographer, Doug Yocum of the National Demographics Corporation. Doug, the floor is yours.
Good evening. Can I be heard? Very good. I'm Doug Yocum, National Demographics Corporation. Here for your fourth redistricting, read, not redistricting, districting hearing. And I will proceed to my presentation. And like the city attorney says, the goal tonight is to, is to focus down to one map and to prepare that map. Make sure that there's a consensus on the council for that map. And then prepare it for your, your next meeting for its, for a first reading of an actual ordinance. So let me share my screen. I hope everybody can see it. Just a quick overview of what we've been through already to pre-map hearings, to post-map hearings, and today is the second one of those. And then your hearing on February 22nd will be to actually start the adoption of your, of your final map. This is a repeat from previous meetings as well. Just a reminder of what the rules are that we have to use as we go, go through the, I keep calling it redistricting. It's the districting process. Tonight, I'll be presenting to you eight focus maps, the, all of which were selected by the council at the last meeting. The names of those maps are here. I also will present two new draft maps that are based on consensus criteria that would give, that was given to me at the last meeting by the council. So I will describe those maps as well. And, but I do want to note that one of the focus maps that we'll be looking at and that was selected at the last meeting is, is not legally compliant. And I will recommend that we not further consider that map. This is the Klein map that was selected as a focus map at the last meeting. Briefly describing it as the American River Canyon combined with the lake and the prison with a substantial portion, but not all of the historic district. That's the Northern District, District Three. District Four is a district that's in the middle of the city. District Five has the auto mall, the Toma Station and a substantial part of Prairie Oaks, but not all of it. District One in this map is on the eastern border. It's, it unites, for the most part, the, what's called the Lexington Parkway community. And District Two has south of 50 in it, the Broadstone community and most of Prairie Oaks. That map is very compliant with population standards. Sorry, I keep, keep moving around here. Here we go. That is closely compliant with, with population standards. I'll, I'll, I'll take that back. It's a 9.29% deviation. So it's, it's compliant, but it's very close to the 10% standard that you, you don't want to go over. This is the Dooley map that was selected at the last meeting. Again, you have that, that Northern District numbered one here with a substantial portion of the, of the Briggs Ranch community next to the prison along with the dam area and American River Canyon. In this map in District Two, historical district is, is combined with with the Toma Station and the mall. And then District Three is that central area. And it, this, this map splits the Lexington Parkway community between three and four, which is the eastern side of the city that takes in the Broadstone area and the, the Empire Ranch area. Then Five has pretty much all Prairie Oaks and portions north of it. And then the south of Folsom area. This just, this map is compliant at 7.48% total deviation. Again, with the District Four is the underpopulated district. Here's the GOS map that I don't, that I don't recommend we, we spend much more time on. It's, it's, it's out of compliance with, with population standards. And let me show you the, the numbers. It's almost 24% total deviation. So this, this map, in order to be considered, has to be substantially changed. And the problems are District Four being underpopulated and District Five being overpopulated. And you can see those on the map here. Four is underpopulated, needs to add a lot of people to it. District Five has way too many people. So I don't recommend that we, that we start with this map. Here's the Balaga map, which I, I'll show you in a moment, is very, very compliant with population standards. It's only 3.94% deviations. So it's, all the districts are very closely populated with each other. You can see that the American River Canyon area is combined with, with the historic community, historic, historic Folsom. And then it kind of moves down, but doesn't quite take in the Toma Station area. District Two, again, is in the middle of the city. And District Four has a substantial part of the Lexington Parkway community, but again, that community is divided. District Three unites the community of, of the Toma Station with Prairie Ranch along with the auto mall. And District Five is the eastern side of the city, Broadstone community, Empire Ranch community and part of the Parkway with the south of Folsom. And as I said, this, 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 this map is, is highly compliant. It's 3.94% total deviation. Good job, Mr. Balaga. Here's the Ferrari map, which was also selected by the council at the last meeting. You can see that the historic area is, is mostly united, but a little bit divided in this map with the American River Canyon area. Briggs Ranch area is divided just south of the prisoner, the prison there. Then it has a District Two that again, is, is the central part of the city. It divides the Lexington community pretty much in, well, it is, it is divided, but it's, it's more united in this map than in other maps. And the District Four, which has the Lexington community in it, goes all the way down through a part of Prairie Oaks to the, to the west side of the south of Folsom area. And then Three has most of Prairie Oaks, the auto mall and the Toma Station. The Ferrari map does have a slight problem with population equality in that it's 10.5% total deviation. But those things are fixable if you wanted to focus on this map some more. But those things are fixable if you wanted to focus on this map some more. Here are the maps drawn by myself. Indies, we've seen the first three before. This is NDC 101, also selected as a focus map. You see that Briggs Ranch is is combined with American River Canyon here. Then the central district goes all the way down to the auto mall and a small portion of the Toma Station. District Four goes from the Toma Station all the way over to the Broadstone community. District One unites south of Folsom with Empire Ranch. And it divides this map divides the Parkway area basically in half, Lexington Parkway area. However, it is very compliant with the deviation standards at 4.4%.
Just just a comment. Doug, I'm not sure if you realize this, but there's Lexington Hills and there's the Parkway.
Oh, well, in my conversation with one of your residents this week, she calls it Lexington Parkway. LPE, Lexington Parkway Empire.
Okay, I don't know who that is, but Lexington Hills is a distinct neighborhood from the Parkway.
Okay. Then I drew a map 101A that unites Briggs Ranch and the American River Parkway area. Then a compact District Four in the middle with the historic area. District One takes in Broadstone and Natoma Station. And then District Two is compact in the middle, taking most of Prairie Oaks and a portion of Broadstone. I think this map has unites Lexington Parkway a little better than than the other maps. But they point out to me again that part of their community is located in District One in this map. 101A is is again compliant with population standards. 101B is very different from the others, although the northern district basically looks the same with Briggs Ranch and the American River Canyon. Historic area is united in this in this map. And District Four starts at the auto mall and goes through Prairie Oaks and gains a portion of the Broadstone community. District One hugs the east side of the city and takes in all of the south of Folsom area. 101B is compliant at 4.27% total deviation. These are two new maps that I that I created for you for consideration at this meeting. Let me tell you the criteria that I used, which was given by to to me by the council at the last meeting. Number one, unite the historic district with American River Canyon. Number two, Natoma Station and the Prairie Oaks communities should be together. You wanted to see one version where south of 50 area was split between two districts. And you also wanted to see one where south of 50 was united into one district. But you also you wanted to see one version that I call flirts with the 10% standard. In other words, if the population deviations standard is 10%, you cannot exceed that. You wanted me to look at a at a version that comes as close to that as we can. So I'll show you those two maps right now. This is map 201. This is the version where south of 50 is split in half. It unite in that District Four, it unites the Prairie Oaks and the Toma Station communities. District One is centrally located again in 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 the city in the city. And District Two has the American River Canyon area united with the historic area. That leaves District Five and Three dividing the Lexington Parkway community. And I'll show you the population deviations on this. It's about 4.77%. In other words, it's it's very compliant with population deviation standards. Unlike the next map I'm going to show you, which is NDC map 202. It unites the historic area with American River Canyon, has the Natoma Station community, together with a centrally located District One there. District Five kind of curls around from the Lexington Parkway community down to Riley Street here. District Four has Prairie Oaks and most of the Broadstone community. And in south of 50 is united in this in this map, again with the Empire area on the east end of your city. So though that that district, that that map is a 8.85% total deviation. So it flirts with the 10%, but doesn't quite get there. But it's certainly compliant with any equal population standard that most courts have considered over the years. Those are all the maps that we selected at the last meeting and that you select that you directed me to to put together. Now the task becomes, what do we do now? I would recommend this, that we start with the Klein map and look at that map closely and see if there's areas that you want to add to a district and subtract from districts. And then proceed to see if there are any other maps that you want to look at or compare to that and decide what you want, what you want to do. We, of course, want to hear from the public about what they think about this, these maps, and what they think should be done. And at that, so at this point, I think that's what we should do.
Thanks for your comments, Doug. But I'm going to turn to my colleagues and see what they would like to do. Would you guys like to get input from the public before we start? Does anybody want to express any preference for any of the maps? How would my colleagues like to proceed?
I'll just express my personal views. The Ferrari map and NDC 201 were two maps that I that I thought were well laid out. For me, the big thing is south of 50, splitting it just because of the major growth that will take place in the next 20 something years. And we, you know, just from looking at some of the numbers we received today, east of East Bidwell will be about 45% of the homes and west of East Bidwell in the in the Folsom Plan area will be about 55%. So I think it I think splitting south of 50 will be will allow it for there to be growth without impacting one council member significantly.
Okay, so your preference, Rosario, was?
That there are two, the Ferrari map and the NDC 201.
Okay.
And I'll just chime in. I I actually think south of 50 is considered a community of interest. I think that should all be united into one district.
In in general, Sarah, I think I would agree with you, but unless I'm wrong, I believe that the the area that abuts the county line is all developing sooner than the rest of it. So in in general terms, I would I would have agreed with you. But just based on where we're seeing the development taking place sooner, I might be inclined to be less upset with splitting that because of the fact that the the stuff to the west is going to develop later. But so what would your preference on the maps be, Sarah?
I like the Klein map. But I would like to, you know, I would make some adjustments to it. But I I mean, I'm interested to hear why and what Mike, Mike and YK think, but I think south of 50 should be considered a community of interest.
Okay. And otherwise, you would like you like the Klein map right now?
That's where I would start, make some adjustments. It's I think it's the most compact.
Mike and YK?
Yeah, I think I would support us starting our discussion with the Klein map. I think it, as Sarah said, is kind of compact. Generally is a sensible place to begin, at least. I I think there's some adjustments that can be made to it also. But I think that's good for discussion purposes.
Mr. Doug, I know you created two more, 201 and 202. And you spoke to some residents also, which is good. You got some feedback. And you're giving a good start with the Mr., you know, Bruce Klein's map. By drawing these two, 201 and 202, have you taken all those, some of those into considerations? You know, is it a good idea to start with yours or have you incorporated those? I just want to, these are new after submit, that's why I want to take a shot on it.
Yes, sir. I I'll start from saying, as I said at one point last time, my maps are no better than anybody else's maps. So it is it is totally up to the council as to how they how they want to draw these up or combine them. To answer your first question, however, I did not take into consideration some of the either the commentary or some of the other things that I've heard from residents when I drew the the two new focus maps. Because I drew them based on what the council told me at the last meeting were there, I think it was three, one, two, four, four specific considerations that they wanted me to look at.
Mike, have you gotten your comments in?
Yeah, I think we need to start someplace and the Klein map's as good as any. I I don't disagree with Rosario, though, that the the NDC 201 is probably an okay place to start also.
So would how would you guys like to proceed? Do you want to have continue to have this conversation or do you want to take some public input?
Well, I think we've narrowed things a little bit. I would ask for public input myself.
Okay. If everybody's okay with that, then Krista, do we have requests to speak from the public?
You do. You have two requests at this time to speak.
Okay.
Okay.
So we'll move forward with that.
Okay, we'll do. So we'll go ahead and get the timer ready. First to speak, oh, we're getting more speakers. So first will be Scott Rafferty, and Scott will be followed by Cheryl Davis. So Scott, go ahead. I'll get you unmuted and set the timer and we'll give you a one minute warning. So you may need to unmute yourself, Scott. Scott, go ahead. When you're ready, it looks like you need to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Go ahead.
I I agree with Mr. Klein that south of 50 is a community of interest. I thought his post, which was put online, I think only today, was very important and significant and not entirely in agreement with my post, which was put on only very recently, even though it's been in the city's possession for quite a long time. And this discussion about south of 50 is just very important because these maps have to be around for a decade. And I think the public has been deprived of that information from not only from us, but an explanation from the council. Is it going to be 7,500 like he says, or is it going to be 15,000 before the 2024 election, which is what the count, what the city published just last May? This is this is a critical fact. Now, in terms of of these maps, I think keeping the historic district united with other areas of south Folsom, of Folsom, south of the river, that it is historically, I mean, that just seems to have been a consensus among most of the input I've heard. And also, I think you have to, I I keep hearing Mr. Kino talk about impacting council members. And I've spoken to your registrar, none of you will be incumbents in the upcoming races. These are new offices. You are entitled to serve out your terms, but you're not entitled to draw communities of interest around yourself. And whatever the map turns out to be, the Haitian district, which unfortunately for Ms. Kino seems always to include her, has to run in 2024. That's just that's just a given. No city has really challenged that principle, whereas so as clear as it is in Folsom.
So to let you know, Mr. Rafferty, you're at one minute. Sorry for interrupting you.
So I I hope we go forward. You know, we've we're very interested in the outcome of this map. We hope that the court has the last say because you are past the safe harbor. And I I think, in fact, it would be useful to have more discussion once we get the population issue nailed down. But ultimately, you need to focus on doing what's right for the Asian community and respecting neighborhoods. And I I think 201 is certainly better than 202, but the Dooley map seems to do things better than 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 the other options. So thank you very much. I I wish it had been a more open process. I think we'll we'll have to deal with that elsewhere. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Scott. So next will be Cheryl Davis and Cheryl will be followed by Modella Condon. So Cheryl, go ahead when you're ready.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you fine.
Perfect, thank you.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. My name is Cheryl Davis and I'm a resident of Empire Ranch. I had sent you an email. Thank you for including it in the packet, along with Bob Dresser, who cannot be here this evening and sends his apologies. We were two of the residents that worked on the Dooley map, but can agree with starting with the Klein map as a way to tweak, because when you look at each of those maps, you kind of think, oh, well, if you tweak this and you tweak that, maybe we can get there. One issue I had, though, is I understood, and I may have taken it down wrong last time, is that the council, some council members had wanted to keep the historic district out of the American River Canyon and in a district by itself with its more surrounding original neighbors and neighborhoods. And that doesn't appear to be what happens in the consultant's maps. And I'm blanking on right now the Klein map. Nope, it's it's not there. It's it's with the American River. And we can agree, too, that south of 50 should be a community of interest. It's going to have very unique needs in its development stage. And that's why we think also that the historic district should be in a district with like residents because it has very unique needs, as we heard earlier, with parking and through fairs on the roads and aging infrastructure that needs to be replaced. We look forward to continuing to work on this. I'm not sure if tonight your plan is to just keep maneuvering it around to get to something or if there's going to be continuing work, but we would love to be engaged in going further with this. And thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. So next will be Modella Condon and Modella will be followed by Robert Goss. So whenever you're ready.
And just one comment to the last speaker. Unless somebody stops me, my understanding, Cheryl, is that we basically have to get to a point where we settle on a map tonight because we have to adopt it by the next meeting. And in the previous speaker, you know, we've still got people that are threatening to take us to court over this. So unfortunately, we don't have as much time as we'd like.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Modella, whenever you're ready, go ahead.
Okay, well, it's not Modella, it's George.
Oh, sorry, it says Modella on the screen.
Sorry.
All right, George, go ahead.
So the Nick Ferrari map, to me, is the most intelligent way to do this. South, the south side needs to be split, I believe. And although the the population numbers are off slightly in District One, I think that area is another area that's going to grow. I think that area is another area that's going to grow with more multiple housing as time goes on. The second thing I'm confused about, I guess, is I'm looking at the Klein map and it's divided into four colored districts. I don't understand that. And I don't understand why we're talking about it because it's not divided into five. So that's really all I really have to say, but I think Ferrari has got the, the best map here as far as a proper layout for the city and the, and the populations.
Actually, George, actually, George, the Klein map is, I wish the colors had shown differently. We have a red next to pink, but there actually are five districts on that map.
Okay, that's, that's great. It's just something I can't see, of course. So, okay. That's, that was my point. And, but again, I go back to the Ferrari map, I think is by far the best choice.
And in 10 years, we'll have to do it again.
Yeah. And like Modela says, in 10 years, we'll be doing this again anyhow. So.
And we'll incorporate to new growth.
That's what I got.
Okay, thank you, George. Next will be Robert Goss and Robert will be followed by Muriel Brownstein Dooley. Robert, go ahead. You'll have three minutes and I will give you a one minute warning.
Thank you, Krista. I don't think I'll need it this time.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of City Council. I want to just emphasize that I believe that South of 50 must be a community of distinction. It will face unique issues over its lifetime of, of development before it becomes a built out community, including the pace of public facility development, road improvements, traffic as it ebbs and flows with various improvements and then other construction related activities will need full representation by a council member. And, and just to amplify or emphasize the community aspect, I trust that all of you, you know, are going to do the right thing for the Folsom community, but I think the, the chief thing to focus on is community because each of these communities have their own issues. I, I believe you, you, you all know that and, and understand that. And that's, I think, the, instead of the, the percent compliant, and I, I understand it has to be under the 10% threshold, but instead of focusing on whether it's 3% or 9.5%, what's most important is bringing the community issues together so that they have representation, a solid representation on the map in the districts. Thank you very much. That'll, that'll be all.
Okay, thanks, Robert. Okay, next will be Muriel Brownstein Dooley and Muriel will be followed by Bruce Klein. So Muriel, when you're ready, go ahead.
Thank you. Mayor Howell and council members, my name is Muriel Brownstein. I live in Nittoma Station. I support the duly map because it's consistent with the four priority factors listed in the Fair Maps Act. Contiguity, communities of interest, easily definable boundaries, and compactness. It also adheres to the population within 1,500 of each other. The Fair Maps Act prohibits partisan gerrymandering, also prohibits assigning districts to favor incumbents over each as his or her own district. And the duly map does meet all the criteria that leads the two adhere to. On a personal note, since I live in Nittoma Station, I certainly want this area to be kept together. And I was not happy to hear that some of the maps being considered split in Nittoma Station. Also, I feel very strongly that South of 50 is a definite community of interest and should be kept together because they're going to have similar issues in the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next will be Bruce Klein. Let me get your timer reset, Bruce.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the Council. Can you hear me okay this time?
Yep, we can hear you. Go ahead, Bruce.
Got off my phone or not of the computer. First comment is on additional time to review these maps. I sent the council an email today and my view is that, I mean, if it could be kicked out for another hearing, great, your city attorney can advise you on that. But if it can't be kicked out for another hearing, then an additional hearing could be an option depending on where you go. I mean, if you ended up with a map that has already been out there, been reviewed, took very minor tweaking, then, then okay, the public's had an opportunity. But if we're going to be into a situation tonight where we're going to be really tweaking boundaries all over the place and that the public hasn't seen that map before, then I think you should call a special meeting next week just for the purposes of discussing that map or two maps in preparation for your first hearing on the 22nd. Big issue for me is what the historic district is tied to. And I tried a couple of options of trying to tie the historic district to the central business or post-war housing. And I just couldn't ever come up with the numbers that really worked well while also trying to find something for north of the river and tying that to something that was logical. So ultimately I came down with the belief that the historic district has the closest community of interest to north of the river because of the two access points north of the river. And I continue to object to these maps that put Briggs Ranch and a portions of Willow Creek with north of the river. I don't believe there's any community of interest in a portions of Briggs or portions of Willow Creek, including the areas that I, I live in on Rebecca Way.
Bruce, just to let you know, you're at one minute. Sorry for interrupting.
To north of the river. The Asian community comments that were made in the Klein map, there's three districts, all of which average about 18% Asian. The Ferrari map, I, I, I don't understand the Willow Creek triangle piece that goes up there and it splits South of 50. And I just don't think that South of 50, consistent with what Robert Goss said, I don't think South of 50 should be split. So there you go. Lots of work to do. If you really feel like you end up having to tweak some map in a significant way, I would ask that the council call a special meeting and make sure that the public really sees it in full bloom before you go to vote on it as a first reading. Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce. Next speaker will be Dolly Suud. Dolly, when you're ready, go ahead.
Yes. Hi, guys. Thank you for doing this. This is only common sense to do the by district and thank you for going over all these maps. I'm sure you all will go with common sense and these maps cannot be drawn according to where the present council members stay right now because things always change. But these maps will be drawn forever or for 10 years. And I totally, totally agree that the South of Folsom will have their own unique issues like Mr. Goss said. And we really need to keep that one together and do not split it. Thank you.
Thanks, Dolly. Okay, well, I see that Cheryl Davis has raised her hand, but she has addressed the council before. So that's the mayor's prerogative to let her speak again.
Is she our last request to speak?
No, you have one more request.
Okay, then I'd like to go with the other person who has not yet spoken.
Okay, so next speaker will be John Wright. John, when you're ready, go ahead. You'll need to unmute. John, I think you're still muted. There you go.
Okay, sorry. I clicked it and then clicked.
Okay, no problem. I'll go ahead and set your timer. You're good to go.
Good evening, Mayor Howell and council members. I like the duly map. I like the fact that the Folsom district is included in, in that side of the river. I live in Scenic Oaks, I'm kind of that little area out there that's included in all the maps. So no matter what you do, I'm in the same one. But I like that. I've been thinking about community of interest and what that means. And I remember reading through some of the, the notes when I was looking through all the maps. And it says it's very, very difficult to define. And I agree with that. In my mind, the, the major community interest is the area south of 50. They're going to have lots and lots of common things. And just the fact that there are the other, on the other side of the old railroad freeway or Highway 50 makes a common border for them. And I think that's part of it. And also, but I, but I like that. And I also think that Briggs Ranch has, in my mind, I'm looking at the, the housing, the lot size, that type of thing, has more in common with the area north of the river. These are fairly, I want to say, large parcels in, in this area. They are in the Valley Pines area. And so I think that's, creates that commonality there. So that, that's the ones that I like. And I think the, the historic district needs to stay with that type of environment. Because as, as Cheryl said, they have infrastructure issues that nobody else is going to have for a while, especially South of 50. I mean, that's a new infrastructure that's going to be put in place. So that's my choice.
Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you.
See.
Is, is that our last speaker, Krista?
That was your last speaker. Now you just have Cheryl Davis raising her hand to talk again.
Cheryl, you can have one minute.
Cheryl, you need to unmute yourself.
Yeah, I just got the message. It was slow in getting to me, I guess. And it will be very quick. I just wanted to agree with Mr. Klein in, you know, if, if this is going to be a working session, so be it. But if there was an offline meeting with maybe the consultants, some concerned residents, your staff, where we can do the tweaking and maybe be able to present something, that sounds like an ideal approach too, unless that's something you want to accomplish tonight as a council. So that was my only two cents there. Thank you for the extra time.
Okay, thank you, Cheryl. Okay, Madam Mayor.
Just a clarification. I don't think that Mr. Klein was suggesting that there be a private meeting. He was suggesting that the public needs to be able to see this. I think it was kind of the opposite of what Cheryl was suggesting. What is the pleasure of my colleagues? Any, any additional questions or comments from council members?
No, I'll just throw out a suggestion that we, we start with a map that has South of 50 in one district. That would be my preference.
Okay, I think that was heard loud, loudly and clearly. So I think that means that, that two oh one, unless I think only Rosario and I seem to express any preference for, for splitting South of 50, but it doesn't sound like anybody else agrees with that. So I have no problem if we, if we look at maps that, that keep it together. So I know two oh one splits.
Yeah.
Mayor Hall, I'm also in inclination to, you know, making that two, just to knowing the numbers, I subtly see the community of interest. I, I see, you know, Mr. Doug was repeatedly using the word redistrict, redistricts. I know he's working on so many redistricts. Once this is built out in 2030, yes, I subtly agree the community of interest, but it is going to be overweight. Again, it's we all got elected from the 80,000 people. So 15,000, 20,000 is not the big number, but seeing the weightage is going to be south of East Bedwell, people, you know, I think Rosario was reading some numbers to all of us. Forty-five percent of the 11,500 homes, which is almost 4,500 homes, built out is 12,000 people to 13,000 people. That's coming up very soon. So in addition to 15,000, you add another 13,000, it is 28,000 people by the time we get to the next elections. That's a lot.
No, just, just a point of clarification, Y K. And, and I don't know where this conversation, how, what generated the conversation because I didn't see where these postings were made, but it looks to me, it looks to me like the, the present development is happening on the eastern side of the plan area as opposed to the western side of the plan area. And I don't want anybody to think that we expect that this entire area is going to be built up by 2030 because it will not be.
Agreed. I mean, we, we are the ones who approved, you know, the map full, so all those mayor hall. So that's one. And the other one is also, again, I agree, community of interest in a big bay. Having two council members collaborating and making things on the new challenges is, you know, thinking, you know, two brains rather than one council is, is always a nice thing as well. So that's why I am leaning towards having that South of 50 is being split across East Bedwell.
Okay, so which, so Y K, what map, what maps are you interested in?
Right, I know. We, we were all talking about Mr. Bruce's. If that is the one, like he's showing everything is in one. Two oh one is a good start. If you want to pick Bruce's, I'm open as well to split.
Okay, so, so the ones that split it right now are two, N D C two oh one.
And Ferrari.
And Ferrari.
Again, the, the work we are planning to do is we are going to take the existing maps, try to tweak and make it that. So we are in fact open.
Okay, but, but Y K, tweaking, splitting south of the freeway versus not splitting south of the freeway is not really a minor tweak. To me, anyway. So I guess what it comes down to is if there's three of us that think that splitting south of the freeway is not necessarily a bad idea, then that leaves us with N D C two oh one. And the Ferrari map.
Yeah, this is why I think I lean towards two oh one. I'm sure Mr. Doug has incorporated a last council feedback into that one while he was developing that. I just want to make sure I'm saying the right words.
Okay. And I, and I appreciate the commentary about the historic district, especially Bruce's trying to find a way to, to include that because I think that there's people that think that it should be included in something that, and I'm looking at N D C two oh one now only because it's on the top of the pile. But the only other thing that I want to comment on is that yes, the historic district has been there a lot, lot longer, but the area that's included in the historic district and a portion of, again, looking at N D C two oh one, portions of District One. If you look at the overall map, a lot of the development that took place in what is shown on that map as District Two goes back to the late seventies, in some cases the sixties through the eighties. I mean, American River Canyon was built out probably by the late 1980s. So that neighborhood is older than I think they're being given credit for. So there's, and you know, there's a lot of residents there that have been there for a very long time. So I don't necessarily have as much heartburn and that. And I know that regardless of how these maps get drawn, it is going to take three to five votes to get anything done anywhere. And I think that's what people are not necessarily understanding. That simply because one council member represents that area, that that's all it's going to take to get stuff done. And as we all know, that's, that's not accurate. It's going to take a consensus of the council to get anything done in any neighborhood. So I.
Carrie, I'm, I'm really glad you mentioned that because one of the things that I, that I thought about as I was getting emails about neighborhoods is that you know, Folsom, we're still one, we're still a community, we're still, you know, if, if one neighborhood gets, you know, split from another, at the end of the day, it's still one Folsom. And getting things done isn't about one council member making it happen. You still have to have a consensus. And so I'm glad you mentioned that.
Mr. Doug.
Yes, sir.
I know originally you were mentioning, you know, Bruce's, Mr. Klein's map. And Mayor Hall also mentioned, you know, splitting the south of 15 to two by taking that one is going to be a, a lot of work this evening. Just want you to think of that quickly.
Madam Mayor, is that a question? Or was there a question?
No, no, I'm just asking, one, taking.
You have to ask Y K. I don't know if that was the question.
There, there's a lot of thought has been gone through, of course, in all of them. I know we were all inclining at the beginning for, one of the maps is Bruce Klein's and also one of yours. So now three of the council members are inclining to split South of 50. So now three of the council members are inclining to split south of 50.
If I can just jump in here for a second, the idea of splitting the area that is literally south of the freeway and to go partially to two different districts. You know, the, as, as the mayor pointed out, the development is working its way from east to west, and it's not going to be completely full in the next 10 years. So there's going to be this constant development going on there in what effectively is the western half of the, of the area. And if the demographics continue in the way that they're going, the entirety of that area will be you know, community of interest as has been stated. And keeping it together is as good a solution as any because we are going to end up with either one or two districts that are overweight by population 10 years from now. And if we, you know, so it's not going to make a difference objectively. We're going to have overweight districts and the lines will change dramatically when we go to redistrict 10 years from now. So I'm, I'm inclined to do it as a singular district because the western half of it is effectively a void right now where there are no people. And they will only come slowly as the entirety of the eastern portion of that area is built out. So splitting the western part off from Bidwell over is isolating a small number of people with people that they don't have anything in common with instead of keeping them together with the ones east of Bidwell that they do have something in common with. So that's why I was inclined to say, keep it together in a single district. And we'll end up with one super overweight district 10 years from now. But we'll just have that one, right?
But what I was thinking, Mike, for some of the same reasons, because the development is happening in the in the higher elevations in the eastern part of that, of the plan area. And the development is going to be behind the progress in the, in the eastern area. That's why the fact that much of that is not going to be developed until we, until we get the 2030 census data. And that to me would be the time to adjust that, you know. Once that development is complete, I would tend to agree with you that the area south of the freeway should be united. But because of the fact that I think, you know, the, the area that I would like to see kind of underpopulated now is both, if you want to call them two halves, both of that, because we know that's going to grow faster than anything that happens north of the freeway. So again, I don't have a problem in splitting it for the time being, knowing that that's where the population is going to need to get smoothed out when the redistricting happens after the 2030 census data comes out.
So would your preference be then to draw a line through the concentration of development that exists currently? Or to create a line where there's very little on one side of the line and lots on the other side of the line?
And right now, I think that's what we have in 201.
Yeah. Okay.
Can I ask a quick question to Pam? I just want to see, you know, what the numbers are in their mind as, as a builder's. I can see it, you know, the west side of the east, you know, also is aggressively started, you know, asking for permits and all those. Elaine?
Yes, I'm here. Are you looking for Pam?
Yeah, Pam is there. I just want to make sure whether we can get some high level understanding. I don't, you know, they know the nuts and bolts. Several builders are going on the west side of the east, you know, East Bidwell as well.
Right. I sent the council some information earlier today with population estimates for the, you know, of course, this is for the future. It's not current. I'm just locating the information. Hang on one second. Okay, so what I was provided by Pam and her team is that they're expected at full buildout, there would be 15,000 people west of East Bidwell and approximately 12,500 east of East Bidwell at buildout.
But that's at buildout. So that's 20, 20 years from now.
Right.
I was looking for what is in our radar for the next few years. Builders always plan ahead, three, four years ahead and, you know, start building. That's one, one point. And the second one, even Mr. Doug, on your 202, on your 202 map, if, I know, we are, we're all here to, you know, tweak the lines. Making a 202 on that east Bidwell line, you know, still accommodates the split and balance the weightage. Drawing, extending the four split onto the 202 map. That's another, you know, thing we can consider definitely.
So Madam Mayor, I mean, as I've said, I believe south of 50 is a community of interest. My preference would be to keep it together, but it sounds like a majority of the council is in favor of splitting it. So if we look at map 201, my issues with map 201 is one side of Silverhorn is in one district, the other side of Silverhorn is in another district. Same thing with Darrington Drive and Briggs Ranch, same thing with Briggs Ranch Drive and Willow Creek Drive. I mean, literally, you're going to have neighbors on one side of the street, you're in one district. I'm on the other side of the street, you're in the other district.
And I, but I think, Sarah, that's going to happen with almost every one of the maps. None of this is ideal, and I don't think at the end of the day, any of us really wants to do this. Unfortunately, we're being forced to.
Yeah, but I would disagree. I don't, there are plenty of other maps where you are not going to have. It literally isn't on one side of the street, you know. I mean, we have major streets, yes, where it's going to divide it, but there, you know, there aren't houses on you know, East Bidwell or something, right? You know what I mean? Where it's like the house is fronting facing it.
We come pretty close.
I have a question. So we know it's going to happen somewhere, somehow in some neighborhood. What is the concern about neighborhoods that may get split somewhere, like for example, Silverhorn? What, what is the concern at that point?
Well, I think there's multiple, but you know, if you're, part of the idea is that, you know, if you live in Lexington Hills and ideally, you want to elect somebody from, you know, if you've got somebody from Lexington Hills running, you, that person would want all of Lexington Hills in that district, not just half of it.
I think the concern is that maybe your next door neighbor would be in a different district and, you know, and you feel like you have very similar interests.
And I think when a neighborhood has one representative, that representative is, is you know, more responsive to them, more responsible to them.
But to some extent, that happens in just about every one of the maps, so.
Well, yeah, but, but we can, okay, so I mean, if you want to start tweaking 201, I don't know if there's a way to do it, but, but like I said, if you kind of look at it on maybe Dave's redistricting, you can see that literally, you know, Darrington Drive, which is not a major street.
Not if you ask the residents of Darrington Drive. You've gotten the email, Sarah.
So that, that would be my issue with it. Again, Lexington Hills is split into two, right down Silverhorn.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Doug.
If I may make a suggestion, since the consent, there is a partial consensus, consensus that south of 50 should be split. That's fairly easy to do because as we all know, there's not that many people here there now. So if you wanted to start with the Klein map, the first move you make is put west of, east Bidwell in, in one of the districts instead of having it united in the Klein map. And then you can deal with any other issue that comes up. Any other issue that anybody else has regarding that map specifically.
Thank you, Doug. I'm glad you, you know, that's my, that was my question, you know, when I was asking, you know, can we do some of that tweak? And you answered that.
And my personal opinion is that the Klein map is fairly elegant about these communities that we've been talking about or, and, and may not need to be tweaked that much.
Yeah, I would agree. If you're going to split south of 50, it can join with the yellow portion of the Klein map pretty easily.
Here's my next suggestion. I suggest that I, I switch to my redistricting software and I share it with everybody so that if somebody has a suggestion, say, Doug, move this from here to here, we can watch it as it happens. Okay?
Okay, can we give Doug maybe five minutes to do that?
I need about 30 seconds.
Okay. Like I said, can we give Doug five minutes to do this?
No problem. You're almost there. You're almost.
Oh, gosh. I was there a second ago.
Full disclosure, I'd like five minutes so I can visit the restroom.
Okay.
Doug, do you need some IT support down the hall?
Yeah, for some reason, my, my Zoom is not cooperating.
So let's, let's take a couple of minutes and let him get set. Okay?
Okay, I should be unmuted now.
You are unmuted. Thank you.
Very good. I have on the, the screen the Klein map. And the, the little black, the little black things are streets. And you can see some of the creeks and rivers here. So I'm waiting direction from a council member or the mayor as to what to do first. I can add to or subtract from any district that you please.
All right. Well, right now it looks like District One is on over.
District One is, is over. District Two, which is, has all of south of 50 in it at the moment, is underpopulated. So I think the desire was to put east, west of East Bidwell in a district. Which district should I do that to?
It's a five. Choice for contiguousness is five.
Five, right? Yeah. Mike, good choice. Watch the county, this is how we did it at the county. So I'm giving to five and I'm taking from two. Okay, we're selecting by block. So you'll see little blocks in this area. They happen to be big. Going to District Five. And if you watch over here, this is the pending changes box. We found 27 people that we are moving into District Five from District Two. So I'm going to, before I do it, I always ask the members of the council, do you want this to go?
This, this needs to be a draft, Doug. Save it with a new name.
Yeah. Okay, hold on.
So Doug, I'm, I'm following along using the Dave's redistricting. So in, in the yellow and five, does that give you 15,313 people?
I just unselected it. So I, the mayor told me that something that's very important that I had, I should have done.
Yep.
I'm going to close this.
A draft.
So I'm going to make a copy of the Klein plan. And I'll name it Klein Two.
You know, Mayor might have done so many big design maps as an engineer. So she knows she don't want to mess up the period.
Okay, so here's a draft map Klein. I'm going to make that change again.
And then make it bigger so we can see the streets.
Yep, okay.
Again, that's 27 people that I'm going to add to District Five.
Sarah, you were saying something before while he's doing this.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure his population matched what I did on Dave's redistricting side. And yes, it does. 15,313. So thank you.
There you go.
Okay, can we slide that down?
Do next?
I'd like to slide it down so I can see more of the map. I don't know that we need to necessarily see the south of the freeway stuff. I'm more interested in north of the freeway. A little bit bigger. Just so we can see the street names.
Okay.
Okay, so to Sarah's point earlier, it looks like we're splitting up neighborhoods along Blue Ravine from people across the street.
Let's see, Riley Street, I see.
Where particularly are you talking about? Because Blue Ravine is kind of a main drag. So either side of it shouldn't be a huge issue.
Well, but you know, we're, we're doing exactly what Sarah said she didn't want to do, and we're splitting people up that are across the street from each other.
Blue Ravine is all in District Four.
There it is.
Yeah, well, it's, it's, if you get closer to East Natoma, it's, it's District One on the south side of Blue Ravine, and it's District Four on the north side of Blue Ravine. But that's
But that's, that's a major.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's splitting Cimarron from the Parkway. It's not that big of a deal. Or yeah, that's, that's logical based on it being a main, main street.
And you've got Riley as a boundary, East Natoma, Blue Ravine, you've got major streets.
That seems reasonable.
Okay, let's have a look at Historic Folsom. How do you like that line?
So Historic Folsom, part of that red needs to turn to purple, right? Kind of right where Sutter Middle School is because really it should go to what is that, Percifer or Percifer Street, Dean Way Alley? I'm not sure. It should go somewhere over there.
Should, should I bring it south all the way to Percifer and then to Dean?
Yes, I believe so. I bet we would need somebody from city staff to confirm, but I believe, yeah. So I think you're going to have to pick up Sutter Middle School is going to bump out, and then you'd have all the way to Dean and then what Stafford Street, I think, is the boundary of the historic district.
Sarah, can you see what I'm, what, what my, where my map is focused right now?
Yeah. Can you move it a little bit to the northeast, the center of your map?
Northeast.
No, upper right, just move the center towards the upper right, just a little bit. No, the other direction. Other way. No, no, other way. There you go. Okay, that's good right there because that's Sutter Middle School, right?
No, no, you need to go down. We can't see it now. Yeah, right. That little square, right? Right there, yes.
That's Sutter Middle School right there.
Yes.
So I was trying to see a little bit more of what's to its south, just a little bit. And Sarah, why do you think that's important to connect the rest of the historic district? Because East Natoma is
Well, because that is the boundary of the historic district. It is my understanding from what staff sent us that it, it goes to
Percifer?
Percifer or Dean, I think maybe Dean, and then Percifer or Dean, I think maybe Dean, and then and then Stafford is perpendicular. I think that's the boundary of the Historic District. But I don't know if Pam's on the line and can confirm. No, not that far. Only to Stafford Street.
I'm looking right now.
Stafford.
Yeah. Elaine, this is Pam. I need to pull up the map as well, but I think that's correct. Just a moment.
Exactly. Thanks, Pam. Doing the same thing.
So if I add that to District Four from District Three, it's it's only 250 people. So we we haven't made any major changes to the to the to the deviation.
And then and then we're basically breaking up. Again, going to Sarah's point, we're breaking up all of the, you know, the pre-1960 housing. We're separating all those people.
Separating them from what?
From each other.
Yeah, the the housing on either side of Dean Way is all kind of similar vintage.
Yep. Which is why I
Looking at
Just why I prefer 201.
The boundaries of the Historic District.
Yeah, this one is very gray. Yes, I know. Yeah, we'll we'll wait for Pam. She's already pulling it.
Sorry, I had some technical
Was it 201?
Pardon, Rosario?
Can we look at 201 and see how that that one looks like it's it goes back to?
Yeah.
201 uses the boundary that Doug just drew for Sarah. And it includes the next block to the east. So over to Wales.
Yeah.
I might just email you the map in case you're not able to find yours.
Thank you.
Doug, just as a suggestion, I know since we have changed one south of 50, splitting into to the five, do you want to make a one more rename of this one as you go along? That way you can always revert back. I'm just talking as an IT guy. More versions as you are moving along on
No, I don't know. Y K, I don't want to have, you know, eight more versions of the map. So let's, you know, if we're gonna keep tweaking this one, that's fine. But right now, my inclination is that this creates some of the same problems that Sarah was not happy about on 201. By comparison.
But didn't we agree at the last meeting that we talked about this, that we wanted all of the Historic District to be together in one district?
I think I think if you talk to the people that live in the Historic District that may or may not be directly across the street from what technically qualifies as the Historic District, they don't see it that way.
Yeah, and the Historic District itself has sub-districts to it. And this is this 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 little area is pretty distinct from some of the other parts of the district. You know, a a a compromise or kind of in-between solution might be to only go to Coloma so that you capture the middle school and the stuff that's immediately behind the middle school or to the north of the middle school. But Percifer Street and Dean Way stay connected in total to the what we've been referring to as the pre-war housing. This is a suggestion.
Yeah, Pers- this is Pam Johns, Community Development Director. Percifer and half of Dean, all the way to Stafford, are in the Historic District boundary. So Sarah, Councilmember Aquino, do you want to ask the question again of exactly what what boundary?
Well, I mean, I whatever the majority of the council wants, I I just thought the the desire was to keep the Historic District in one district, which is why I was going by the actual boundaries. But if you think it makes more sense the way it is highlighted right now, I don't know if there's anybody who lives in the Historic District on the line who wants to weigh in.
Isn't that the way NDC 201 is laid out?
NDC 201 is just like what Doug had drawn, but it also includes the block to the north and east that is bounded by Dean Way and you and Wales. So it includes that as well. That's
Okay, so can we save this one? And maybe take a look at tweaks that we might make to 201?
Okay, so you would like me to add the middle school area to District Three in this in this in this map?
Right. And then I'd like you to save it. And then I'd like you to pull up 201 and see what tweaks we could make to that.
Okay. Map to two saves automatically, just for your information.
Just as long as we make sure we get different names for them. So you know which ones are the ones we tweaked today versus disrupting previous ones.
Yeah, they all show when they're less modified.
I was just gonna tell you that, Doug. You just need to hit save now.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna go to the Historic District.
Well, that that boundary is exactly what we were trying to replicate in the other.
Okay, what what I'd like to see is if if we have that item taken care of, I'd like to see to the that would be to the east and see where Sarah would like to see some of the lines change. I think it was in five, Sarah?
Um, I just know that we've gotten a lot of feedback from folks in Lexington Hills who didn't like the idea that their neighborhood was being split. And this one splits it right down Silverhorn Drive. Not to mention all the splitting that happens in Briggs Ranch.
Here's a Silverhorn right here.
Yeah. Yeah. So Doug, the the one of the primary things was the, there's a couple of courts. If you zoom back in where you were, there's a couple of courts that are on South Lexington Drive. So to the left of your cursor. Just right. No. Okay, so move to the right. They're right there. Those couple of courts right there. I heard from strangely more than one resident asking why they were separated from the rest of District Five on a couple of different maps. So
Those should definitely be included in five.
Yeah.
Those cul-de-sacs.
Which probably means the whole college. Yeah, there you go. So now at least you're consistently using Silverhorn as a boundary, top to bottom.
I won't do anything until somebody says go.
What what's the population swap there?
It's 234 people.
And what so what does that do to that one? Yeah. If you add that to five?
It makes it 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 increases the deviation on five from about 1% to 2.3. And then it increased it decreases the deviation on District Three from four to
Underweight by 4%.
Yeah, underweight by 4%.
Okay.
And it's currently a 2.5. So it's not a major change.
Okay.
All right. I heard the word go.
You didn't. I said all right, but that's okay.
So it doesn't resolve all of
The code word was go.
Okay.
That doesn't resolve the issue of either side of Silverhorn being in different districts, but at least it's consistent in doing that.
Yeah.
And what about Briggs Ranch?
Yes. Is that is that in what is some that's really five now? Or is that part of two?
I'm not familiar with the boundaries of Briggs Ranch. You you all are gonna have to help me.
It looks
Right now, Briggs Ranch is split right now between that. Okay, if you move your cursor down a little bit, it's now go back up again. So that that weird line just to the right there. Yeah. Is there a way to move that? So there's less parcelling out of Briggs Ranch?
Okay, so you want the District Two to take a little more of this area in District Five?
Yep.
Okay, let's see what we can do.
Okay, can you go
I was, you know what? I was gonna suggest you go the other direction and you actually add some of that to five. And then maybe you can resolve the because because we've got District Three underweight right now. Maybe you can add some of two to five and then down at the south limit of five, pass some things from five to three. Maybe resolve both things.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
All right, so instead of five from we're gonna go to from five.
Yeah.
No, I'm sorry.
Five from two. There you go.
That's a railroad track right there. And we've moved 678 people.
There you go.
You want more?
What does that do to the number?
Uh, five is it's 7% deviation now. But we'll have to subtract from it as as the councilman said, on the south side.
Okay, so
Now we go further.
Which way do you want to go, Mike?
I purposely, I personally would go up and grab the stuff that little bit that's across the street because that's as that's a small number of population and kind of would interlink with Briggs as well as anywhere.
Yeah.
I'd probably, I personally would probably stop right there. And then I would start
This is what you've done. You've gone all the way to the to the to the lake.
Yeah.
What does that do to the numbers?
It's at 8.7%, but like we said, five will have to now subtract from the south and it be added to three.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, let me check one thing before I go. Ah, left out this little block right here. And it's not little.
That's not lit. It's gnolls. It's a very, very dense population there.
Yeah, so we've we've gone to 1,000 people that we're switching now. And District Five's deviation is is very bad. But so it will have to be fixed on the south. Okay. I'm waiting for the order.
You know? Well, that little that little neighborhood that that you just swapped over is pretty isolated right there. So it doesn't necessarily link better with two or with five than anything else. So
Yeah, I would agree.
You could have left it alone.
Yeah.
And it would be just as sensible, just so we don't make the problem bigger than necessary.
Because that is that is pretty isolated.
Yeah, Doug, it was it was not the the bigger one that has the lake. It was that little wedge at the corner that you swapped.
Yeah.
So keep that one and then swap out the little corner piece pieces. There you go.
Okay.
They go valley in five. Yeah.
I'm waiting for the word.
Okay.
Go.
Go for the five. Okay, now this area is isolated because it used to be in District Two.
Okay, I apologize. That's not what I that was not my intention, but I guess guess incorporate it all. That's weird.
So we need to add it to to five. Okay.
Yeah. Sorry about that. The line work was getting in my head here.
And then we need to go south in five.
Is it strange that five isn't picking up that little piece of Briggs Ranch Drive?
Where's that?
Like if you zoom in again, it's leaving off this little segment that I just saw when he was when you were zoomed in.
That one?
Like like go if you move your cursor down and then down and then to the left.
Oops.
Yeah, just go down right. Okay, you see Briggs Ranch Drive right there. It's just like hanging out outside. Is that okay?
Is there houses there? That's the bypass.
I don't I don't think there are any houses there, Elaine.
Yeah, there aren't.
Okay, is that just the okay?
That's the leftover area from when the road was realigned.
Yeah, there's no people there.
Okay, okay. I was misplacing it in my mind. Thank you.
Okay, here's what I suggest. Five now needs to lose people.
Yep.
So I suggest this area here.
What we're talking about, what 1,500, give or take?
I think we moved 1,000, just yeah, probably 1,500. So we'll start here. 200 400 500 700 800 And look, here's the two numbers here, 1.4 versus 6.29. Should I go here or should I go here?
I would go along South Lexington myself.
Yeah, those those what look like cul-de-sacs there.
Okay, that that's a very big block right there. See that?
No, that's not what we were talking about, Doug. I think, um, see where your cursor is?
Here.
Nope.
Down.
Down.
You almost you almost had it. It just the interior of those spaces that are left over, there's a lot of people in them. That's all.
Right. So
So you need to go down?
Oops.
Yeah, that might work.
What does that do to the number, Doug?
Unfortunately, it's not giving me five. It's giving me two for some reason. Let me let me check something. There it is. All right.
You know what, Sarah? If if he goes a little further up Silverhorn, I think we've resolved the issue with the splitting Silverhorn up to Pemberton or whatever that's that area is right there. If that if we still have capacity there.
Yeah, I mean, it still divides Lexington Hills.
Yeah.
You hear your numbers right here. 4.9 versus almost even in five now.
Okay. Well, you could take the you could take a little bit of so five is five is overweight now or three is overweight now? Five's perfect.
Three is overweight now.
Okay. All right. Well, then you can, yeah, well, we're working around. I mean, I think we're we're getting there.
Okay, waiting for the word.
Yes, and then we'll have to do another tweak.
Okay, here are your numbers, 4.9, 2.3. Two is very underweighted at this point. And five is just right.
So we need to do we need to lose some people in three? Into four?
Yeah.
Okay, I would suggest I'm starting at the at the railroad.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Right here?
The railroad.
Like further up there. Yeah.
Run along the railroad track. Run along the railroad track.
Right there, right, Carrie?
Yeah, he's got it running diagonally across the page right now.
Okay, um, so four needs to pick up from three?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so if you snag that portion by the tracks.
What does that do?
Um, four is way over.
Yeah, but we want, we, we want three to be under right now, and then we gotta keep shifting back towards the historic district. Because four being under, that's the district that's got the most growth coming. I'm sorry, three is the one that we want to be most underweight, right? Ultimately, without being illegal. So am I reading this right? The four is now sixteen, four oh two, and three is now fourteen, oh, three, three?
Correct.
Okay, and is fourteen, oh, three, three compliant?
Yeah, it is under by two point one percent.
So that would be okay?
You can go further.
Sarah, how's this feeling to you or Rosario? I, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna-
No, it's good.
Do this all myself.
What does that do to the number? I, I've got the, the faces showing over the number, so it's hard for me to see them.
Yeah, I had to move the faces over to the right so that, and minimize them so they're not on my screen. So anyway, um, four, District Four would be nine percent over and three would be, uh, two percent under.
Bless you.
Thank you all.
Over eleven percent deviation.
So how about if we, how about if we break that at Broadstone Parkway? And the stuff that-
They- Take this out?
No, um, take everything. No, not all of it. See all the stuff on the right there, Doug? Yeah, take all of that out.
One more?
It's just-
What does that do?
Not much.
Oh, because, no, because that's Pilateo.
It's just Pilateo, so it's just all commercial.
Yeah. So I, I personally go ahead and include that just for simplicity of boundaries.
Yeah.
And then we can work on swapping four to one and then one to two and to get this all balanced out.
Okay, waiting for the word, go.
Okay.
Nobody ever says go. He's gotten like all right and okay.
No, Mike said go a couple of times.
They just don't wanna be like the county.
You're correct, we don't.
Okay, there are your numbers. One now needs, uh, to take from four in order to even out and make it overpopulated, so then the two can move down into one.
Yeah.
So we can start here on the west.
Okay.
I think we all know what this is.
Well, oh, yeah. Yeah, very little population.
Starting here.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna add to one from four.
We didn't have any population there.
Yeah, so far I'm at zero.
It's because it's the auto mall, it's all commercial.
Yeah, I think the better place is at the center of the city, over to the, to the west, or to the east, excuse me.
Ooh, you're breaking up Natomah Station there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm picking up a lot of people too. Alright, four is, is almost even now, but it's ugly, so let me finish it. This is a very strangely shaped block right here.
Yeah.
So the Toma Station Drive and Ingersoll is now the boundary.
There's no houses on Ingersoll.
So do we wanna leave it at six, six percent, what, do we want one to be six percent over or more? Because four is now two, two point three percent over instead of nine point three.
So what have we done? We've just moved apartments into one?
Whatever's right here.
Yeah, that's that condo complex that's across from the outlet wall.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Go. Thank you, YK.
Nice job, YK.
Thank you.
I just wanna show you that you are connected. It's, it's, it's just a strangely shaped block.
Yeah.
Oh, but I did leave one out. It's a zero. It's basically Highway fifty.
Yeah, hopefully nobody lives there.
Alright, we've got a very even situation now between one and two. How should District Two move into District One?
Hmm, that's a great question.
Do we, do we need to?
Need a little bit.
Yes, because twelve percent is not an acceptable deviation total.
Okay, again, sorry, I can't see the numbers.
Should we continue south from where old, old historic area is, or should we go south from?
I would go, I would go over near.
Yeah, I would actually move to the west.
Yep.
So kind of, not quite along Folsom Boulevard, but, uh, or Folsom Auburn Road. So the area, I mean, we could capture a chunk of the Central Business District or this, this area that you're hovering over now. I think those have as much in common with the historic district as anybody.
Yes, they do.
Yeah.
Oops.
We wanna go from one to two.
So maybe you're going down to, I can't see what that street, on to Lemby?
Yeah.
That's basically that, most of that was all built at the same time.
It's only five hundred folks, so two is, uh, under by three and one is over by three.
It's better. What are we trying to get to?
Uh, zero if you want.
What's, what's the total variation right now?
Um, twelve.
So do we need to-
Six here and six there.
So do we need to add some more into that?
I don't think so.
What about if you capture the block that's, the, the block that's across from Fols, uh, from Sutter Middle School? So immediately to the east of that block you chose?
Right here?
No, next one up.
Okay, there's Sutter Middle School, mean there.
So, no, 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 just right in that center between Riley and East Bidwell, because there's a bunch of, uh, there's a bunch of apartments there now.
Uh, made it better.
Okay.
And there's more apartments that are under construction there as well.
I'll wait for the word.
Go.
Alright, let's look at our deviations now.
Hmm, it's looking pretty good.
I have a resident texting me asking to double check that we got all of Knowles together, that he felt like maybe part of it was missed up, up, um, past East Natomah.
What district?
Um-
Five.
Five, yeah, there were, the, the concern, if you could just zoom in, I remember we were talking about Knowles and saying it was densely populated. The concern is maybe it didn't all get grabbed.
Yeah, I'm not sure where that is, so.
Let's see.
It's exactly at the same number five is, that little black block.
Yeah, right there, like, right where the number is.
Okay, it's all in five.
Okay, okay, great.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't know how everybody else feels, but I kinda, I think this one checks a lot of boxes, as they say.
Yep.
Yeah.
Sarah, you got an opinion?
Well, this, this would not have been an app I chose, but that's okay.
Right now, T is a minus two point one and four is two point three three.
And that's where we think the majority of the growth is gonna take place?
Yeah. I'm open even to, I'm, I'm open even to knock down, um, three to even close to eight or nine.
So right now, District Four is the most heavily populated, is that correct?
Correct.
So I thought we were trying to allow for future growth.
Yeah, I thi, I think we, we probably need to take one more pass at the boundary between two and one and one and four, at least, to shift some population northward on the map from four to one to two. And I'm not sure precisely what to capture into two, but um, we could continue over by Sutter Middle School, kind of expanding that boundary a little bit.
And that's not a bad place to start.
Yeah. I mean, it's that or we work, or we work more down the west edge of one.
I don't know what else you can do over there, because then you're gonna break up Natomah Station. It's one thing to, it's one thing to have the, the apartments or condos, whatever they are, separate from the rest of the neighborhood, but if we start splitting up single-family residential, I think that's gonna be an issue.
Carrie, I'm thinking about the, the quadrant that is the most westerly edge of one currently. So basically from the, can you zoom in over where the number one is currently? So basically, Carrie, I'm, I'm talking about using the, the Union Pacific Railroad and Blue Ravine as boundaries and, oh no, I guess that's already in there, shoot.
Yeah, and I have think, and I think if-
Oh, no, 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 I'm talking about using the, I'm talking about moving those upward into the district with the historic district. So Doug, can you scroll the-
See what it does? Because I don't know how many, how many homes are actually in there. I think that's all commercial up here.
I just wanna see what's above this, yeah. So, so the edge of the historic district, so number two, um, I'm thinking about adding to it from number one.
Okay, so what if, so what if, Stephen, if you go to, I can't see that, if you go to Bidwell Street and add that little, it gets a couple more streets in there?
I guess I'm, I'm thinking of what's west of Sibley and between the railroad tracks.
Okay, check it and see what it does.
Yeah, so from one to two, Doug. Yeah, that area right there.
Right here.
Yep.
One, two, two, right?
Oh, from, oh, going this way.
Other way.
Yeah, from one to two, no.
No, no.
Other way.
From one, from one to two.
Yeah, we're gonna take from District One and add it to District Two.
Yeah.
So I think you got it backwards.
Backwards, the number switched, yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
Doug, I have a resident asking if you're able to project the population numbers on, you know, in each of your little squares that say the district name and the percentage, are you able to, or somewhere list the population numbers so they can track how many are in each?
Um, hold on. Oh, where is it?
I just, I just, population?
Yes.
Elaine, after each time that he's made a change, he's, he was able to bring that up so that we could see the tota, see it.
Just as a total, not, not as, uh, for each one.
Yeah, I think they're looking for a, per district.
Oh, there you go. I think you got it.
Oops, doesn't show up now.
Weird.
Nope. Failed.
Okay.
See if it does it.
You have to click apply?
Did I do that?
No, you just said okay.
Hey, it's up. We got it.
Yeah, so, so we were trying to, we're trying to move from, some population from District One to District Two in the area west of Sibley, which is kinda right in there, yeah.
Right here?
Nope, no, no, west, right in there, yeah. There you go.
That's three hundred fifty.
Uh, keep working towards the river.
It's all commercial.
Yeah.
Nobody there.
Nobody over here.
Okay.
There's thirteen folks here.
Keep heading south towards, uh, Blue Ravine then. There's some people in there. I can see the little numbers now.
Yeah. See this block over here?
Yeah, that's, there's no residents there, but nonetheless, just to make it clean, I think-
Grab them, yeah.
I think you can take everything down to Blue Ravine, so.
There's no one there anyway.
Yeah, but there is in that center core right there that he's on now.
Yep.
Okay, we've, we're at, uh, almost a thousand people. Do you wanna add this block right here on Sibley?
What's that gonna do to the, what's, yeah, yeah.
Okay, one is now, uh, under by six, but I think we've cut it off. See this line here?
Yeah.
This is your district line.
Yep.
So I'm-
No, 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 no. What are you doing?
I think you've cut off two parts of your district.
The, uh, oh, I see what you mean.
District One is now in two different pieces.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Could also make a comment while we're here, that a resident is texting me that Coventry Circle, which is right below where your red shading is, Doug, should be with the rest of Natomah Station.
Yeah.
It's just kind of hanging out, out there.
I see.
Yeah, so I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, so with that in mind, then I think you add, you do this, and then that area that we have that's isolated, add it back to four, and then we work on the east edge of four, switching over to one.
Yeah. All right. Give me the word.
Let's give it a go.
So this goes back to four.
That goes back to four, yeah. I mean, really, yeah, yeah.
Okay, four will be over by almost 9% and one will be under by 13 and a half percent.
Right, so we're going to make a swap between those now. So now the, the job is to take along the south, the border between one and four, and make some trades. Okay, so hold on a second, though. We gave, we made too much too overweight.
It's these areas here that did it.
Yeah, so.
Diamond Glen.
Yeah.
So I guess those have to go back to one, right? What's, what's the population of two right now?
It's 5% over.
5% over of what number? What's the target number? 15 or something like that?
1,008. Yeah.
Okay.
1,5008.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Can four pick up some of three? Our area, yeah.
For Zaria, what I was trying to like work around to is giving some of four to one. And now we actually just need to make a one lap, one small adjustment to give some of two back to one. And then that should get us where we want, which is with District four able to absorb some population growth. We want to, I think that one should be, you know, close to zero. So we got to swap some of that back to District one.
Oh, maybe just Diamond Glen. Oh. Or all of that.
Or all of that. What does that do? I mean, how much is that, Doug, total?
Far. It's 1,000 people and District two would be almost even at this point.
Okay.
Let me focus out just a bit. See what you're doing. That makes no difference right there.
Okay.
Ready?
Yeah.
Oh.
13.48 minus six.
Here's your numbers, if, if they're too small, just tell me. Four is over by nine. And one is under by six.
But how are we now again under on two? My gosh. Like squeezing a, squeezing a balloon here.
Exactly.
All right. Well, we've got to decide some, District four has got to give up population to District one. That's, that's the last move here, so it's just a matter of whether we want to work on the east edge of that boundary or the center. Because we're trying to keep Natomah Station intact.
So here's Natomah Station here.
Yeah.
It's a lot of folks. Take it all the way to the mall.
Doug, are there any more people on the, on the bottom side, on the yellow?
No, that's your city boundary, sir.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, that's south of 50.
I'm sorry, not on that side, left side.
Over here?
Yeah, yeah, just wanted to see.
No, that's west of the, of the auto mall, which is Fair Oaks.
And then nine, those kind of numbers are the people, are the homes.
The little green numbers are the number of people in each block.
Then you're breaking up Natomah Station.
Yeah, so Carrie, what do, what do you think about the central area in between Broadstone and, and Natomah Station?
Yeah, it might be that we have to go.
Yeah, along Blue Ravine. So we're. So this, maybe everything north of Russey or something?
I mean, because those are.
We get Silver Barn thing.
Yeah, but those are distinct subdivisions and neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Like if you take the Man Court area, that's one neighborhood.
Oh, yeah, right there where your hand is, yeah.
Yeah.
Try picking off some of that area.
Oh, goes all the way down to Carter.
I would, I would keep it closer to the.
Yeah, try, try the block to the immediate west of that. Or the block, yeah, try there.
Yep.
Yeah, what does that do right there?
One is almost perfect at this point, the district to the north. And four is over by 3.6% instead of 9%.
Okay, well, I think we want one to be the one that's a little over and four to be the one that's a little under to accommodate growth.
Right, so, so take Man Court and Palmer Circle.
Goes all the way down to Carter. That puts one at 3% over and four is almost perfect at this point.
That works better for, for me, given that we want to underpopulate four.
Yeah.
So just pointing out that wouldn't, won't this split Prairie Oaks and Natomah Station?
But what's happening is we're doing it in Prairie Oaks and those are distinct subdivisions.
Okay, I'm just bringing up feedback that we've received from residents.
Yeah.
And it was mostly from the Natomah Station people that didn't want any of Prairie Oaks being excluded. But Natomah Station, you really can't distinguish one builder from another. And with regard to what was built in Prairie Oaks, those individual builders built like as a, as a little neighborhood. So if there's going to be any kind of a breakup there, I think as long as we're keeping the, the subdivision sections together, that's going to be acceptable.
Doug, have you got an undo button if we tell you to go on this one and we want to back up one step?
Yes.
Okay, I say we hit go and see what the populations look like in total now. I think that's pretty good.
Positives, negatives.
So our total delta is what, five?
Three.
2.9 to negative 2.1, right?
Yeah, your, your total deviation is, at this point is 5%.
I, there's going to be some neighbors that are across the street from each other someplace that have to, will have slightly different lawn signs.
I have a resident texting saying maybe grab Willow Springs from four along McAdoo rather than breaking up Prairie Oaks, saying Willow Springs is a better grab.
Where is that?
Along McAdoo.
So that's.
From.
West of there.
Yeah.
These folks?
No, I think it's those.
I think it's.
Along McAdoo is those, those streets that kind of circle back on each other, those guys.
Yeah, yeah.
Palm Tree.
Right.
That's. I don't know.
You could just be a swap that avoids the Prairie Oaks issue.
I can't say I'm familiar enough with the circulation right there.
Yeah, I'm honestly not either.
Where are we looking at, guys?
Right along McAdoo.
So the, the resident is saying to, to grab Willow Springs from four.
That's a, that's a whole bunch of people.
Instead of breaking up Prairie Oaks.
I mean, you can just see from the numbers that are there.
That's a lot of numbers.
Lot of people, yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
I don't think that's going to work. And again, Willow Hills is a more contiguous neighborhood like Natomah Station than portions of Prairie Oaks are.
I think honestly, what, what we ended up with is something that looks not unlike the Klein map that we were talking about, just kind of with District one squished to the west a little bit. Or what was, what was, yeah, maybe three on the Klein map.
I can switch back to Klein at any time.
No, no.
No, I think we got too much invested in this one. Well, hey, I, I could stop here. I'm happy to shut up and listen, though.
I, I. I could stop here, too.
Yeah.
YK, Sarah?
Thinking.
While YK's thinking, Sarah?
Does anybody want to talk about sequencing?
Sequencing of what, Doug?
Which districts run in which elections?
Let's decide on a map before we get to that question.
Okay.
Because frankly, I'm not sure that that was even clearly spelled out on the agenda. And I was going to ask the question as to whether or not we had to determine that tonight, or can we do it at the next meeting when we adopt the map?
I will defer to your attorney.
I am just on my team myself as well. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Stephen, one city attorney. Per the district transition process, which is very tightly compacted and prescribed, we have to determine sequencing tonight.
I believe that's so you can post a final map for seven days and then enact your first, your first reading of an ordinance.
First reading is set for February, your February 22nd meeting.
Well, I'd suggest odds and evens then of these numbers. Odds in 22 and evens in 24.
So, but, all right, that's, that would be a really simple solution, but. Does that, does that mean that? I, I don't know what that means in terms of, because I don't, I don't know, frankly, based on this, where anybody lives. And so my question is going to be, is somebody that was elected at large last year going to have to run again, this, or two years ago, going to have to run again this year?
Yes.
Yeah, one person will have the opportunity to do that, but won't lose their seat regardless of the result.
Everybody gets their four-year term that they were elected to.
Yeah.
And is that with Mike's odd and even?
Yes.
Does anybody have any other comment they want to make? Because I, I got nothing to add to this.
Can you guys explain one more time the sequencing? I know Mike said it. I didn't get it.
Sorry, my, my suggestion would be that we call an election for what's shown on the screen right now as District one, three, and five in 2022, so this year. And then Districts two and four would go in 2024, which is actually kind of a nice coincidence.
Explain the specifics if, if anybody is interested.
Mike, I think I can say this, in three, me and Sarah are there, right, at least.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
So, since I ran at large, so I'll be good still as a council member until 2024.
100%.
I have to wait until 2026 to run again if I decide not move from there when Sarah opens up in 2026.
That, that would be the case.
No, that's, it's not.
Yeah, his term, so if, if, if he didn't choose to run this year for the District three seat, he, his term would continue till 2024 at large. And then it would end, and if he still lived in District four, the next election, or he still lived in District three, the next election for District three would be in 2026. So, yeah, you got it exactly, like.
Got it.
Yeah.
Or just switch districts so that three is four and four is three.
I'm good with the recommendation, maybe. Three, one, five. Four, two. Yeah, that's me and Sarah, so I don't know anybody else, other council members wants to speak up. I'm okay with that recommendation.
Anybody else have anything else they want to add? It's been a long time since I heard such lack of opinions.
Sarah, I can vote for you this year. Just kidding.
I, I mean, yeah, or you just switch it so that they're flip-flopped and, and the area that has Empire Ranch comes up in 2024.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I, I think it's, it's not, you know, too bad. As I said, I think at least me and Sarah are talking here for number three. We both are on that, even though we are not drawing this until now, we never said who is living where. We draw the pictures and we are at the final stage, hence I'm pulling the people where they're staying. So I'm good with the recommendation.
Madam Mayor, this is Stephen Wong, so I just want to make sure I'm clear.
Steve, you don't need to introduce yourself, we can tell it's you. And YK's same, YK's same for you.
So council member Kino is recommending Districts One, Four, and Five be sequenced for the 2022 election, and then Two and Three.
No, that's not what she's saying. No, that's not what she's saying. What she said, Steve, was if we switch the numbers between three and four, so that, um, 2022 would be, Mike, did you say odd numbers? And then 2026 would be even numbers?
Yeah, and I think, I think what Sarah was saying is that we could call One, Four, and Five in 22, and Two and Three in 24. Sarah, is that effectively what you were saying?
If you look at the numbers right now, I'm saying you could go One, Four, and Five. But if you, if you like the idea of odd, One, Three, Five, and then Two and Four, just swap the area that is, includes Empire Ranch, call that District Four, the area that includes Natomas Station, call that District Three.
He's reached, Sarah's suggesting renumbering.
So without renumbering, it's One, Four, and Five for 2022.
Right, and it's Two and Three for 2024 if you don't renumber them. She was just saying if you want to stick to your odd, odd-even thing, you can just change the number.
Oh, yeah, I was only saying odds and evens because it was a coincidence of how this is numbered. But, yeah, that's fine.
So, do you guys care about the three versus four?
No.
Okay, if nobody cares about that, so, Mike, I think your suggestion was that odd numbers is, is this year?
That's right.
Okay, and even numbers is two years from now.
That was my suggestion.
Okay, anybody else have a problem with that?
No, no, but, so that would mean that District Three, somebody from there will run for City Council this year.
Correct.
That's right.
Which will put an extra person on the council.
No.
Instead of five, it'll be six?
No.
No, if, if the election, if, if, so, if instead of One, Three, and Five, just keeping the numbers that are on the map, right? If we did One, Four, and Five, Sarah's term comes to an end at the end of 2022. So she would be termed out if she didn't move to District Four.
No, 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 she wouldn't be termed out.
Yes, they would.
Yes, she would.
She would.
It's YK that has two additional years.
No, stop, guys. Termed out means that Sarah cannot run for City Council because she's served.
Her, her current term would be over.
Not, not term, not term limits, her term would, yeah.
Yeah.
So if there was no election for District Three at the end of this year, you get it?
Sarah would be termed out.
Let's not say termed out because that would be something different.
My term would end and there would be nothing for me to run for unless I moved to District Four, which I am not going to do.
Right, so, but if we left it as Three, Sarah needs to run again this year anyway, correct?
Correct.
Yes, and YK could either also run against me and one of us would be elected presumably unless somebody else.
No, but, no, but YK would stay.
No, he has two options. He can run and represent District Three if he wins, or he can stay through 2024, be an at-large representative, and then run again in 2026.
Okay. Yep, so Sarah running and getting reelected does not knock YK off the council.
Yeah.
That's right.
How about the other council members? I'm, I'm curious.
I, I live in District Five.
Clean.
I live in District Two.
I guess that, that must put me in one.
It does.
So.
So, and, and Carrie, Sarah, and Mike are up this year anyway.
Right.
Can I ask a question, you know, and I know that, you know, people, you know, there's been conversation about, you know, council members and districts and not looking at that, but the people did elect us to, to, to the council, and the voters would want us to keep our seats. Why would we not make adjustments so that we can retain the current council we have? That, that's the part I'm not connecting. We've already been elected, people voted for us to get in. Why not make an attempt to preserve those seats?
Well, Rosario, I guess my only response to that would be that the person who has been the most vocal about going after council members has been the person who does not live in this community and has no long-term interest.
I.
And that would be the attorney that filed the lawsuit. He has made unfounded claims against, um, some of my colleagues and our staff. And he has, and he has gone to bordering on outrageous lengths to protect YK because he makes, in, in his commentary, he makes it sound like he doesn't realize that YK was elected at large. He makes it sound like YK was elected by the Asian community, and that's not true.
Right.
You know, you weren't elected by the Hispanic community and, you know, the rest of us weren't elected by, in my case, old white people, or in, you know, the case of Sarah's, you know, young white people, and Mike would be middle-aged white people.
So, so that doesn't, that, Carrie, that doesn't answer the question is why would we not then make four bigger, taking some of, um, part of three that would preserve, that would separate YK and Sarah?
Rosario, there is nothing stopping us from doing that.
Well, I, I don't see why we, we wouldn't, I mean, and I know we've spent so much time on this map, but I, I just don't see why we don't do that when the people of Folsom elected us. They want us to be able to preserve our seats on the council.
Right. Yeah, you know, we can give a shot, you know, it's not that we have ended very close. I'm on that red border, very, yeah, that's, I'm very close there, very close. It's not that, you know, we are deterring to do, I am on that Cataline.
With your permission, I will, I will bring up the, 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 the thing that shows where the house is.
Okay. I'm going to ask my wife to close the doors.
I needed consensus.
Do we have, do we have permission from everyone to put the house there? Are, are you just doing, are we doing everybody, Doug, or?
At this point, I would be only listing one of you.
YK, I'm okay.
YK, are you okay? All right.
Go ahead, because I'm very close, that's what we are probably going to do. YK is okay.
Here we go.
I see.
Yeah, that is.
I'm going to ask my wife to lock the doors. Just kidding. Sorry, sorry.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, very close there. I mean, again, I echo what Rosario said.
Like, circle away, I don't know.
We don't have to go to circle away even, very close to Cataline is a very good community in Taitu of that Broadstone. Doug, please give a shot.
Yeah, in the end, the district that's going to get the most population gain is Three right now. So making it a little further underweight is not a bad result here.
Yeah.
Given that Four is kind of right on the money at the moment, so.
Tell me when you want me to start clicking.
Yeah.
Go.
Go ahead, sir. From Three to Four.
How much is that?
Two seventy.
See whether he can cover that community. It is, it's not.
How's that work?
I can see this configuration on many other maps.
Yeah.
How are the numbers looking now, Mr. Doug?
Four would be over by five percent, and Three would be under by six point eight. So unfortunately, I think that's too much. Yes.
Well, we can adjust Four, so that way we can get to the, that ten, ten bracket.
So you, you would want that configuration, correct?
If you ask me, I live in that community, yeah, that's one community.
That's too much. Yeah, makes sense.
All right, we'll have to make an adjustment if, 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 if this is the consensus of the council.
Yeah.
I hear two yeses.
Yes.
Three, yes.
Yeah, we're not deterring or deviating too much, no, we're.
Six, we're over ten, so Four has to lose and Three has to gain.
Hmm.
Interesting. Mike, the places we adjusted before, maybe we can go back to the One and Four.
Yeah, that little intersection between the three districts, between One, Three, and Four, right in there, seems like we got to work in that spot.
What is that, one eighty-two, something like that?
Yeah, that, that big number there, right there.
Yeah, what is?
One eighty-two.
So we're trying to move, so you could move, um, the wedge along Oak Avenue, that triangular wedge, that could move to Three from One.
I'm not. Oh, right here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because those are, that's a little gated community that's all by itself anyway.
On the Oak, yeah, that's right.
Yep, so flip, flip that to Three.
Yeah, okay, you have solved, I think, part of your problem.
Yep. Okay, so now our delta is down to nine percent.
Four, five, six, seven, eight.
Eight, eight point three six.
I have a resident, resident's texting me saying, take the two Broadstone gated communities at East Spidwell and Oak, both sides of the street.
Yeah, we don't need to reduce One, though. And we want Three to be a little underweight. Oh, we could flip that to Four, you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, yeah.
How's that?
Well, we don't, no, 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 no.
Wait.
No, that's not right. We would be, we, we would need to give away some population from Four to One at this point.
Yes.
Yeah, so that, that's only big chunks now, I think. Doug, can we see a little bit further south, please?
Sure.
Thank you. So, um, the area to the west of Oak Avenue Parkway, I think that's our, that's our target right there. Trying to flip that from Four to One, enough of it.
What if you go to Durbin Court? Birdwood Way? And just pick up that little piece? Right in there.
Okay, let's see. Ooh, look at that.
Oh, gosh. Yeah, no, that's, the other piece is what we want. Try there. Yeah, there you go.
It's two twenty.
Okay.
What street is that? Is that a major, does that say Halladon?
Yeah.
This is the big one right there.
Do you have to?
Five hundred people right there, four twenty-two.
It's how much?
Four twenty-two, and you have to take this one too.
Yeah. That's so unusually drawn.
Yeah. Thank you, Census Bureau.
Although, you know what, that street only has residents on one side, that big loop Marsh Hawk Drive.
Yeah, because the, the lake is in the middle.
Right, right.
So that actually makes sense. Click on that one again, Doug. Yeah, that's not nonsense right there. We just, you'd want to grab the one that says ninety-three, I think, possibly also.
Looks funny.
Does look funny.
Yeah.
Maybe our, uh, shoot, maybe further west is the solution, so not there, the other end of, like Prairie City Road, the neighborhood that's along Prairie, the eastern side of Prairie City, right there across from the high school.
That's a lot of, that's a lot of homes.
Yeah.
Pretty dense in there.
Well, we need to move, I mean, what do we need to move, like six hundred or something like that to get this to work?
Right, right there, there's like a four forty-one and a one fifty, there's a lot in there.
Actually.
Technically, you don't need to move any of them because you're under ten percent.
Oh, okay. Well, the only risk.
Can you zoom out so we can see?
The only risk we're taking right now is that the, the south of fifty part of District Four gains, you know, population really quickly, and then that district becomes really relatively overpopulated, but I think I see that as a minor risk.
And I don't see that happening as quickly as anybody thinks it's going to happen because, again, the more valuable lots are those view lots in the, on the, on the eastern end.
Yeah.
I think that's why, that's why those builders went fast, went forward faster.
Yeah. Rosario, what do you think?
I love it. Looks good.
Excellent. Let's go no further.
Yeah.
Sarah, no one has ever said love, in my, in my experience.
That was Rosario.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor.
I'm speaking specifically to Sarah for a reason.
Let's not encourage more inappropriate comments from certain individuals.
I have a resident asking if we're going to look at demographics or how Republicans and Democrats are split.
We cannot look at how Republicans and Democrats are split because that is not part of the census data. This is based on census data.
The demographics, though, you should have that, Doug, right?
Yeah, it's right here.
Yeah.
I, I can go, we can, these are kind of dense numbers, so let me see if I can come up with a quick report.
And in fact, to the, whoever the person is that's asking a question about voter registration, we can't even ask how many people are actually registered to vote. So partisan has nothing to do with anything.
But I think because when you look at the Dave's redistricting site and you, you click the analyze button or whatever, it does tell. But I think, because when you look at the Dave's redistricting site, and you, you click the analyze button or whatever, it does tell you if a district claims Republican or Democrat, so that's probably where they're thinking it.
Okay. Can anyone see what's on the screen?
No.
It's very small.
Move in a little bit.
You may have a zoom in.
Unfortunately, it, it, it doesn't have a zoom feature, unless I can find it here.
Yeah, there is one.
Right at the top right there, the little to the right, with the little magnifying glass.
Oh, that one, okay. Yeah. Yep.
Just keep going, yeah.
There you go.
Keep going.
Maybe one more. Maybe, maybe zoom two more times.
Oops.
Go on, keep going.
Yeah.
Okay, look at citizen voting age down here. District three has the highest Asian, and District, well, two and four have the same kind of, in the Hispanics area.
So relatively evenly distributed, eh?
Yes. The Asian community is not concentrated in your city. There's no concentrations.
Okay.
Okay, so we're still at, um, one, three, five, twenty twenty-two, two, four, twenty twenty-four.
Yes.
Oh, two, four, two, four.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's why Mike thought it was special.
I didn't think of it until I said it. I don't think Mike thought I'm gonna add it time either. Okay, so, um.
The city attorney may want to suggest the form of a motion now.
Thank, thank you very much, Doug. Very good work, and thank you, council members. This is very good product with public engagement on the fly. What we need for the council is to adopt a motion authorizing that the council approve this map as the final map at public hearing number five, which is scheduled for February twenty-second.
And don't forget sequencing.
Yes. Sequencing, as indicated, is Districts one, three, and five will be up for election in twenty twenty-two, and Districts two and four will follow in twenty twenty-four.
Don't, don't we have to wait for a public comment, or?
You certainly can. This is a public hearing. You certainly can if you want.
Okay, we've been, I think we've been getting public.
We did, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, but, I mean, in terms of asking for a motion, aren't, aren't we gonna kinda put this out there and let people comment on it before we make any final decisions?
No, we have to decide that this is the map, and then we have to adopt it at the next council meeting. So I don't know if that public commentary should come now, cause if we, if we have to adopt the map, that's why, that's why I was confused about this whole thing, Steve. Why do we adopt it at the next meeting? That makes no sense.
As part of the ordinance that you'll be introducing and adopting, tonight you're selecting one preferred map from.
So if it's an ordinance, don't we have to do first and second reading?
Yes, ma'am.
Twenty second.
Number five.
Twenty second is the first reading, your next meeting.
There'll be two opportunities for the public to comment again.
It doesn't hurt for Madam Mayor to solicit public comment on this particular product that the council has, uh, just now created, and also on the sequencing that the council is inclined to approve for next public hearing.
So are we having that, um, public commentary tonight, Steve, or can we have it at the next meeting?
It wouldn't hurt to have it tonight.
Okay, then we are, then we are opening the public hearing. Krista, do we have anybody that, um, would like to speak on this?
You do. Um, so you have, um, actually three speakers, um, that are, have all spoken before but are asking to speak again, um, first being Cheryl Davis. So Cheryl, go ahead and mute yourself. I'll start the three-minute timer for you.
Can we keep it to two minutes?
That's your prerogative. We can.
That would be my preference. It's, it's, it's late.
Okay, let me set a new timer really quickly here.
Especially if all three speakers have already spoken.
Yeah. Okay, Cheryl, when you're ready, I've got you set for two minutes.
Thank you very much. I actually have been trying to ask a question during your process of mapping. Um, I did not, I don't have the city manager's phone number, so I couldn't text her my questions, and there was no other, other opportunity. It's actually for your city attorney. When you just took those last steps to jog into District Three specifically to ensure that, um, Councilmember Y K's seat was protected, is that not considered gerrymandering and in conflict with the conditions you've outlined in your staff report?
Madam Mayor, if I may answer that, um, I don't know if, if she has further questions, but the answer is no, because as part of the mapping process, the council is also required to consider citizen input and also the citizens' wishes, which include electing all five council members at various elections to serve on the city council.
But I understood that in one of the laws, I don't know if it's California or the federal, that a community interest, of, community of interest is not defined by the elected person. Correct?
Madam Mayor, if I may ask you, that community interest is defined in state law in the, um, California Voting Rights Act, and it is defined as a population that shares common social or economic interests that should be included within a single district for purpose of effective and fair representation. It is defined.
Okay, it just appears that the map was going well and then took this weird jog that was specific to a council member retaining his seat that actually makes for the district to look weird and is contrary to the, the natural, um, boundary of East Bidwell.
Cheryl, it's important to keep in mind that, um, Y K would have kept his seat no matter what.
Correct. That's why I'm not sure why you gerrymandered this in then. I just, that didn't make sense to me. Cause he would have kept his seat, or he could have run in twenty twenty-two for that district if he wanted to. So that, that's, that's my concern. It just seemed like a forced play here, just to protect someone's seat. And in all fairness, he should run again and see if he's elected, but it, it just doesn't seem right to carve out a district specific for council persons. That just seems gerrymandering to me. But I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Next speaker, Krista. And Krista, you're muted, I think.
I was muted, sorry. And next speaker will be Scott Rafferty, and, um, I will reset the timer for two minutes for you. When you're ready, go ahead.
Well, hello, um, I mean, just looking at this map substantively from what I have heard from your constituents, uh, it doesn't seem to respect neighborhoods, and we haven't heard a lot about neighborhoods this evening. But the desire of the historic district to be, uh, aligned with other communities south of the river is, is gone. The neighborhoods that David Reed thought should be kept together, uh, are now split three different ways. East Bidwell is, uh, on again, off again, not recognized as a clear boundary. Just about all of the substantive guidance that, uh, uh, and it's not the Fair Map, it's not the CBRA, Mr. Wang, it's the Fair Maps Act provides, uh, has gone out the window. But the bigger issue is procedural, and that is, we've heard anonymous people who happen to have the phone number of the city manager having input that the rest of your constituents do not. And we've heard explicit, I mean, it'll be read back to you, because you're not going to, uh, get this map through without a court challenge. It's just not happening. And what you've said here tonight has, has pretty much laid a record of disregarding practically every legal standard that you're required to uphold. So you have many advantages. None of you have been elected to District, uh, as District Members. None of you will be incumbents on the ballot. The registrar will not allow you to use that designation. You're talking about keeping yourselves in office is fundamentally incorrect. What you're doing is trying to choose voters who will elect you to a new office, and that's fundamentally wrong. The law says it's wrong, and you're not going to get away with it. I, unlike Mr. Wang, I've been in a lot of cities in these proceedings, and you've kinda taken the cake this evening in terms of the number of, of flagrant, uh, disregards for, not just for the law, but really for the integrity of your constituents and the equality they have of influence. You've demonstrated why their influence is not equal. The notion of a city manager reading in her friends who have her telephone numbers, comments, while not, and not even, not even identifying them. I mean, it's, it's just, it's made this a bit of a travesty, frankly. So, I mean, we will be in court. You seem to think you're, uh, all set in that department. I think you'll find otherwise, but if you, if that doesn't happen quickly, there'll be years of appeals, because this will not stand. This is an attack on Californian democracy, and, uh, it, you're not gonna get away with it. Thank you.
All right, next speaker will be Bruce Klein. I'll reset the clock for you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Um, I am pretty frustrated with this process tonight, honestly. And I'm frustrated that we would have a motion tonight, um, to move something forward at next meeting, irrespective of the fact that there will be two opportunities to hear it. We all know that when a council has approved a map that's gonna go forward for first reading on the twenty-second, that that's what's gonna happen. And I've been involved in this process a lot. I've studied a lot of maps. I've moved a lot of lines around. And even me knowing where a lot of those lines are, I can't, um, sit here at ten o'clock or whatever time it is at night and try to evaluate what the council has just done. I do respect and want Rosario to have, uh, excuse me, uh, Sarah have, you know, her own district. I like the little bump out. I don't like how it looks. I think it's pretty crazy. It does strike me in many, many areas that this is a preservation of, of incumbents. And I don't like to say that, but that's kinda the way it feels to me. And again, I go back to my original point in, well, first original point was, you should have a special meeting next week where you get this map out on Dave's redistricting, let folks look at the thing, and then decide. Let us, you know, not at ten o'clock at night when we're all very tired and looking and worn down. Let's look at it and then decide what you're gonna do on a motion. Maybe there's other tweaks that can occur. Second point is, I, you know, the area where Rosario lives and the area where I live, I continue to say that has no connection to, um, north of the river. I mean, it's just this little triangle sitting there with no otherwise connection. And, you know, it's because it's separated by the Oak Avenue Parkway, and there's probably reasons for that. And I can't really tell what the streets are between two and five, based on the map that I can't even expand by my fingers on this page, to say, all right, where are these streets? How do they line up between Briggs and Willow Creek? So I would very much urge this council to come back at, for one more meeting. Call a special meeting before you decide to take some action tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. You have no further requests to speak.
Okay, um, the city attorney is telling us that we have to take an action tonight. That wouldn't have been my preference, but I'm not an attorney, and now we've got a former city attorney who is disputing what his successor has had to say to us, so I'm not sure quite how to handle that. And we don't have any choice right now but to take advice from our city attorney.
Steve, how, Steve, how does it affect things to add a special meeting before the twenty-second?
The CBRA requires that we follow a very compact timeline, and it's very heavily prescribed. Between public hearings number three and number four, both have to happen within forty-five days. If the council were to wish to push this out, one more hearing to February twenty-second, we can make the forty-five day timeline, the barely, but we can make the forty-five day timeline if the, if the council wishes to push this out. Continue to last meeting, uh, public hearing to February twenty-second, that is possible.
But go. What, no, what, Steve, what Atlanta's suggesting is, or what, what Bruce has suggested is, do we have a special meeting next week?
We can if you want, but we don't have to. What I'm saying, Madam Mayor is.
It's not about what we have to do, Steve. It's about what can we do legally?
That's what I'm saying. Legally, you can push it out to the February twenty-second meeting. We can still make the forty-five day timeline, but barely. Without, without.
So we don't, we don't.
Special meeting if you want.
We can, we can have another discussion about this without having a special meeting between now and the twenty-second, is what you're saying?
That is correct.
Okay.
The goal at the end of public hearing number four is to select one preferred map and determine sequencing.
And then the public can react to this map between now and then at the public hearing on the twenty-second?
That's correct, yes. The choices, the councils.
So the question is, though, is if we were to receive public comment between now and the twenty-second on this map that we've developed this evening, um, and we wanted to modify it in some way to accommodate a request or good advice, can we do that at the meeting of the twenty-second and then do a first reading on it immediately?
That's correct. Yes, you can.
You can do that. Okay, all right.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so we need Dave's redistricting to be on hand, just in case.
Well, I'm supportive of having, uh, putting a meeting in next week. I mean, I, as I've kinda expressed all along, I, I think there will be some concern from residents. And, you know, the points that David Reed brought up, the Lexington Hills, we heard from a lot of those residents, so I'm, I support sticking another meeting in next week.
And we can consider any day of next week for a special meeting, if that's the council's wish.
I support another meeting next week.
I would request that that meeting be on Tuesday.
So do you want an afternoon or an evening meeting on February fifteen?
Evening, please.
So a six, you wanna do a six thirty, February fifteenth meeting, or an alternative time on the fifteenth?
I'd just as soon do it at five o'clock.
Mayor, also, uh, if our demographic will be available?
No, my, I am not available on the fifteenth.
And if I can just pipe in, there is a utility commission meeting in the chambers the night of the fifteenth.
Well, we could, I mean, it would be Zoom. Oh, but you, you need the, you need the council chambers to, to broadcast, Krista, that we're, okay, yeah.
Doug, what is your availability next week?
I'm sorry?
What, what is your availability next week?
Available the six, seventeenth and the eighteenth.
So Thursday. Thursday and Friday. Which are betting right up against noticing for the 22nd meeting.
Well, listen, at this point, do we need Doug or do we need somebody who can drive Dave's redistricting if necessary?
Unfortunately, it's Doug's redistricting, not Dave's redistricting.
I'm sorry.
This is a specialized program that we have.
Doug, I know you're-
We, we being the operative word. Is there anybody else, Doug, in your office that can drive the program? We don't necessarily need-
Yes, many, many of us can drive the program, but, uh, they have similar problems that I'm encountering here, which is, uh, we, we have to be at other meetings with other cities and, and school districts.
I, I guess, Mr. Yocum, what I'm suggesting is could you coach up Krista or one of our staff to be able to make slight modifications to this?
Unfortunately-
That was a valid answer. Just curious.
It requires, uh, the person to have a license from MAPTitude and that's not cheap.
How does, does by chance Tuesday earlier in the day work for you, Doug? Like if we had more of a-
Let me check.
Late morning, early afternoon meeting, something like that?
Uh, yeah. I have, uh, I have to be i- in another city at 6 o'clock.
So say we-
That could take quite a while, so I'm, I'm, I'm setting aside the whole evening for that.
So what about a 1 o'clock special meeting on Tuesday, just like you did today, council?
No problem.
Fine with me.
Works for me.
Mike, you're okay?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
With that, Madam Mayor, I would request a motion to continue tonight's meeting, public hearing number four, to next Tuesday night, February 15th.
Tuesday afternoon.
At 1 PM.
Somebody want to make that motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Challem Chirla?
Yes.
And Hal?
Yes.
Okay, do we still need to have a motion to make this one public by way of the city website or something like that?
No, sir, we will upload it to the city's website.
Okay.
No, we've already, yeah, we'll, we'll be sure that, that it's posted there and shared accordingly.
Okay. Uh, my only other suggestion would be that perhaps we give it a name that is more distinct than NDC 201 version two.
Okay, we'll call it something different than that.
Map, yeah, preferred map or something.
Yeah, something like that.
Hands out, yeah.
Okay, um, so do we need to call the roll on that?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
We called the roll on the motion to continue the public hearing to February 15th. Was there a second motion that I missed? I seconded.
No, we're good. There's not a, there's not a second motion.
Yeah.
Okay, in which case some, that item is concluded, which brings us to city manager comment.
That's right.
Yeah, just very briefly, Mayor and council, um, we will be able to, it appears, um, if all goes according to plan with Sacramento County, to return to in-person meetings with your February 22nd city council meeting and I will let you know if that changes. I wanted to remind everyone that February 24th is the mayor's state of the city at 1 PM at Lakeside Church and you can register at wholesomechamber.com. You now have a, a special meeting, um, Tuesday at 1 PM, but you also have another special meeting, wanted the public to know, on March 8th at 1 PM to continue our process of, uh, working on a strategy to close the city's funding gap and that is all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Council comments. Let's start with YK.
Today, I don't have it. This is a great experience, uh, especially from 1 o'clock. You know, I, I really, really, you know, I like the way we did the financial strategy and gap. I want to thank city team members, each and every department.
Thank you, Councilmember Challem Chirla.
Sarah?
No report.
Rosario?
No report tonight.
Mike?
Um, just one thing, the, the SECOG, um, Policy and Innovation Committee forwarded a recommendation to the full board to approve a, um, race equity and inclusion policy for SECOG, which, um, I think it would be worthwhile for everybody to check out. It's not necessarily something we need to emulate directly, but it's a nice step in the right direction after a lot of work by a number of board members who made up a Race Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee of SECOG to develop a, a some guiding, some guiding principles for the organization.
Mike, could you pass that information along to staff?
Happy to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And my only comment tonight is please drive carefully. Thank you all for, um, your many, many hours of patience today, all of my colleagues as well as our staff. And I guess we'll see you all again next Tuesday. And with that, we are adjourned at, I've got 10:15. And we'll see you next week.
Thank you, everyone. Bye.